To order the March 25, 2025, meeting of the Half Moon Bay Planning Commission. Bridgette, do you want to read the pledge first or read the hybrid meeting instructions?
I can do the hybrid, Chair Reddick. Welcome to the March 25, 2025 Planning Commission meeting. We'd like to let you know that our meetings are broadcasted live on Pacific Coast TV's webpage as well as Channel 27. We also have Spanish interpretation at our meetings. Brief etiquette on public comment to review for us in person and those that are on the Zoom platform. The Planning Commission Chair will open up the general public comment section of the agenda. At that time, the community members are welcome to speak on any items that are not listed on the general, this evening's agenda. For those that are specifically for tonight's listed, for those items listed specifically on tonight's agenda, during that time, the items that will be discussed, the Chair will designate a specific time for public comment opportunities. Three minutes will be given to those who are comment, or another time will be determined at the discretion of the Chair. We will begin in-person comments first and followed by those on Zoom. Those wanting to speak in person, I will recognize you by the green cards, or the Chair will recognize you on the green cards. Please make sure that you start with your name and speak clearly for the record. Those on the phone via telephone only, please push *6 to raise and then raise your hand, and *9 to mute and unmute yourself. This evening, correspondence was sent to the Planning Commission this afternoon regarding both projects on Redondo Beach and the Measure D ratifications. I've since then posted on the website, so on the bottom of the website, you will see all those memos from staff along with all of the attached documents of public comment and so forth that came in. I'd like to remind all of us on the podium here, or at the diocese, to remember to speak into your microphone, so that way the people on TV in person and in hybrid can hear us as clear as possible. Thank you, everyone, for your patience, and I'm going to hand it back over to Chair Reddick to officially start this meeting.
Thank you, Bridgette. Will you please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you, and we'll take a roll call, please, Bridgette?
Yes. Commissioner Gossett?
Here.
Commissioner Hernandez?
I am present.
Commissioner Rems?
Here.
Vice Chair Gorn?
Here.
And Chair Reddick?
Here.
All Commissioners are present this evening.
The first item on our agenda tonight is consideration of minutes of the last Planning Commission meeting, March 11.
Through the Chair.
Yes, Commissioner Gorn, Vice Chair Gorn.
So, this is, this was, there was a study session, fundamentals refresher, Planning Commission bylaws, and it's really sort of like mundane and not that exciting, but there was a point to be made that the city code was different than the Planning Commission. So, I just feel like that should be in here, that that contradiction is in here and needs to be acted on in some way, that staff is planning to act on that in some way.
Yes, I recall what you're talking about, and I hope it's an easy thing to add that to the minutes.
Yeah, I mean, I think if everyone agrees on that.
There also was a minor matter that Bridgette and I discussed this afternoon, that the minutes will reflect that the votes on acknowledging the housing element was 5-0, not 4-0.
Yeah. You were teleconferencing and forgot. Yeah, well, I'll make a change to that and the adjournment to be 5-0.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes as amended.
I will second that.
All those in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Aye. Very good. Our next item of business is to invite any members of the public, either in person or attending by Zoom, who wish to make comments on items that are not on tonight's agenda, to feel free to do so. If you want to comment on the two items on our agenda later, we'll do that at that time, but at this point, we invite all general comments, if any.
I have none. Chair Reddick on Zoom.
Okay. We will not open public hearing at this point. We're going to, because of the number of people who are here and interested in the Redondo Beach Road gate issue and presumably the Measure D question, Senior Planner Doug Garrison has graciously allowed to let us address those two items first and get to his SEQA presentation immediately after that. So, with that in mind, thank you, Doug, with that in mind, let's go to Item 1B, which is coastal development permit for use of the gate on Redondo Beach Road. Mr. Scott Phillips, I gather, will present.
Yes, thank you, Chair Reddick and members of the Planning Commission. I'm Scott Phillips, Senior Planner here at the city, and I'll be presenting on the Redondo Beach Gate. Now, this is a city-initiated project. Public Works submitted the application for requesting a coastal development permit for the existing Redondo Beach Gate. Now, this slide gives the Commission and members of the public, you know, sort of a, an overview of where the gate exists today. It's the little green line there, just north of Carnoustie Development, and the gate is roughly three-quarters of a mile west along Redondo Beach Road from Cabrillo Highway. Now, west of the gate, we have access to the Ocean Colony Partners Maintenance Yard for the golf courses, as well as Coastside Land Trust owns several properties to the west, as well as several other property owners. There is an existing single-family house at the end, sort of dogleg off of Redondo, towards the end there on phone. Now, this slide shows, was taken in 1985, and it's a Polaroid of the existing gate being fabricated on-site, and, you know, for one, I want to give credit to our, one of our Public Works maintenance workers that actually had this Polaroid available to us from 1985. So, it's pretty amazing. I was thoroughly amazed when he was able to provide that to us. So, the gate was fabricated in 1985. At the time, the Half Moon Bay Police Department was tasked with opening and, you know, or closing the gate and opening it some. And Public Works continued to maintain the gates, you know, painting and dealing with corrosion after a while. Now, approximately in 2000, the gates were replaced, or, you know, some fairly major maintenance took place, and as you can see, they've gone from sort of an X to a cross. So, that gives you an indication of, you know, the work that took place in roughly 2000. Now, just before this meeting, I had a member of the public contact me and point out that there was an error in the staff report, that I noted that closures of the gate ceased in 2011, but that actually was, I was told that that was, that's not exactly correct, that gate closures and opening in the morning took place consistently up to 2015. And Ocean Colony Partners, they were opening the gate regularly every morning, you know, from 2011 to 2015. So, that's, I did note in the staff report that gate closures stopped in 2011, when the Sheriff's, San Mateo County Sheriff's Office took over law enforcement in the city. It was actually 2015 that the gate closures stopped. Now, a little bit about, on the, a little bit more on the project description, what's included in the scope of the work is retroactive approval of the previous gate installation, use and operation of the gate for nighttime closures as well as maintenance. And, you know, back in 85, yes, we had the Coastal Act, we did not have a certified The city neglected to approach coastal staff back in 85 for a coastal development permit. Frankly, I don't think we even realized that we needed one. So, that's kind of why, where we're at now, that, you know, we've been, the right thing to do is to issue ourselves a coastal development permit, and that's what's sort of initiated this application. Now, the gate, as I mentioned, the gate closures would take place nighttime, you know, typically just after sunset, once people have had a chance to watch the sunset and want to leave. And then bike and ped access, bicycle and pedestrian access would be maintained at all times. So, you would still be able to walk to the end of Redondo Beach Road even at night, say it's a, you know, a full moon, you want to go for a moonlit hike or whatever, that still would be possible. This would not impact any sort of pedestrian or bicycle access during the evening. Now, the only physical change that would take place to the gate would be an updated locking mechanism, you know, more of a Knox locks, and Fire District, you know, authorized locking mechanism. And that would allow, the access to the locking mechanism would be granted, of course, to the Fire District, Public Works, the Sheriff's Office, and all the landowners west of the gate, including Ocean Colony Partners, Coastside Land Trust, the owner of the existing house at the end, they would all be granted access to this locking mechanism. Now, the first thing that we did once we received this application was that we routed the conceptual plans that I personally put together to the California Coastal Commission, our Building Division, we had our building official look at the, you know, the gate proposal, as well as the Coastside Fire Protection District and the Coastside County Water District. We did receive comments from the Fire District about the Knox locks, and, you know, that was, that was about it. They didn't, you know, request any sort of, you know, any additional fire access infrastructure at all, just, just the new locking mechanism. Now, let's see. And then coastal staff, they did have some preliminary comments, you know, primarily about the bike-ped access and then other gates that the city controls. We did follow up with a coordination meeting in person and to discuss the gate situation a little bit more. And, you know, we also talked about, you know, the, sort of more in-depth, the premise behind the application, that, you know, the, that we were aware of, you know, activities that, you know, at the end of the gate, end of the roadway, that, you know, are unfavorable, for example, illegal dumping that, you know, on a regular basis, that our Public Works maintenance crew end up having to, you know, deal with occasionally. So, that, we did receive the suggestion to reach out to the Fire, to the Sheriff's Office for call logs, which we did, and we received call logs from the Sheriff's Office for the past, I believe, four years. And that was included in your staff report and summarized, or attached to the staff report and summarized in the staff report. Now, the meat of the analysis includes compliance with our local coastal program, including our land use plan and zoning, as well as SEQA. Now, Chapter 2 of our land use plan deals with development, and this does meet the definition of development, and there is policy that existing uses are allowed to be maintained, if they're, especially if they're ancillary facilities to support coastal access. You know, part of this is that, you know, the Commission was supportive of the coastal access improvements, you know, that Coastside Land Trust intends to install, including stairways to the beach and parking lots and restroom. The California Coastal Commission was also supportive of those improvements, and the idea is that this, the closure, the nighttime closure of the gate would help preserve those improvements. So, we do feel that it's ancillary to coastal access. Now, Chapter 5, Coastal Access and Recreation. The gate closures would take place at night for the purposes of improving safety and security. And the city has worked with Coastside Land Trust to facilitate, you know, the improvements west of the gate, and, you know, also with, you know, some land exchanges that have taken place and other, other things. So, and then lastly, Redondo Beach Road is considered a primary scenic coastal access route in our land use plan, Chapter 9, which I believe was not prior to the new land use plan. And no noticeable change would take place to the gate besides the new locking mechanisms. We would update the signage as well, and I'll go into a little more detail on that in the next few slides. Now, zoning, there is a section in the zoning code that allows for continuation of existing land uses prior to the adoption of a planned unit development plan, and this was added to our code in 1996, so after the gates were installed. So, this, this really, this section of the zoning code, we feel, allows us to move forward with the gate closures at night prior to a specific plan. Now, the gates also meet other related development standards of the zoning code, including height, they're less than seven feet in height, but they would still impede vehicle access during, during the nighttime. The project is categorically exempt from SEQA since it's an existing facility, and, you know, regardless of the permitting process that took place in the past, potential impacts related to SEQA are evaluated on what exists on the ground today. So, we really feel that the existing facility's exemption is appropriate in this case. Now, as far as outreach and noticing, we posted the site just as soon as Public Works submitted the application. We did hear from a few folks that live in the surrounding area of the gate. The site was then posted again to advertise tonight's meeting. We also mailed notices out to all the neighbors within 300 feet. We published a legal notice in the San Mateo County Daily Journal. And we did receive some, a few comments, you know, one of, we had a couple of concerns from a Planning Commissioner, one specifically about the conditions of approval. You may have noticed that we included the home, hold harmless condition in the draft conditions of approval. There really, that doesn't make sense in this case, since it's Public Works. We're not going to, you know, require the Public Works Director to hold himself harmless. So, we will remove that condition. And then also, a couple of comments about signage, that you may have noticed that the signage out there at the gate have been, is kind of worn, and I think the phone numbers are old on there and have been taped over. So, we'll certainly replace the signage out there. For one, warning motorists that are driving west along Redondo Beach Road, that there is a gate closure, to be warned about difficulty turning around. More specific hours on gate closures, that it's not necessarily going to, we're not going to trap people at the end of the road before the sundown, for example. We're going to, you know, allow for, you know, normal exiting after sunset, and, and then also update the phone number in case some, anyone does get trapped without a key and, you know, west of the gate, that there's someone to call, you know, for, in order to open the gate. Now, we did receive a letter this afternoon from coastal staff, and I encouraged the Planning Commission to review the letter. You know, I'll have to say that it's, you know, we did do, you know, quite a bit of reconnaissance work leading up to this meeting, you know, with coastal staff, as well as meeting with them, and, you know, I'll just leave it at that, that, you know, the Commission, we encourage you to review the letter, hear public comments, and, you know, evaluate all information in front of you. Our recommendation is to adopt the resolution to retroactively approve coastal development for the existing gate at Redondo Beach Road, and return to past practice of closing the gate, you know, roughly around, you know, after sundown, and then, and then opening the gate, you know, early in the morning. We've provided conditions of approval that will allow for the city to oversee the responsibility of opening and closing the gate, and, you know, and happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Scott. I'm going to ask that we hold on our clarifying questions, given the number of interested parties who are here to comment, and...
Through the Chair?
Yeah?
I just wanted to report, I've had ex parte communications, so I've actually spoken with several people, including Bruce Russell, who manages the Carnoustie Properties, as well as Sarah Polgar, who's the Chief Operating Officer for Coastside Land Trust.
Any other ex parte communications? Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. With that, I'll open the public hearing on this matter, and turning to the green cards folks have submitted, ask Trish Hayward to come forward and feel free to comment.
Yes, I have a presentation to share. Thank you for listening. I'm Trish Hayward, and I live in Half Moon Bay, right near the Redondo Beach Road gate. Oh, the present. Um, thanks for listening. I have, I'm supporting the staff recommendation to close the gate at Redondo Beach Road between, just want to make a clarification, it says on the recommendation between sunrise and sunset, or it should be between sunset, or sunset and sunrise, just to clarify. So, in summary, what we're seeing, those of us who live nearby, is that there's a decline going on at the end of Redondo Beach Road at that vacant lot, that is a parking lot. What we see in the research is that vacant lots actually, that show neglect, so let's say dumping, littering, lack of monitoring, it actually leads ultimately to degrading social order. And so, that's what we're seeing. I've been in this area for five years, I've walked through there every, almost every day for five years, and there's significant change going on right now. There's unmonitored access, as we know, and it started with little issues, it then started to degrade. We're seeing, I'll show you, significantly more dumping, a lot more activity at night that's, we're wondering what people are doing there at 4:00 in the morning. We're seeing a lot of speeding at night, we're seeing abandoned cars, people staying in there overnight, and, and what it's causing is visitors to be concerned and not wanting to go there after hours. So, the gate that has been there, as Scott said, would be easily closed, and we're recommending that that happens, so that we can help restore order and safety there. So, I'm just going to show you, this is sort of like increasing challenge, just in the dumping and stuff. So, this is a study that I found, that's showing that actually this is a fact, that in illegal dumping, loitering, vandalism can signal broader social disorganization, neglect, which are precursors to increased crime or illicit activity, whatever you want to call it. So, this is just, just showing you sort of progression over the last year only, of the kind of dumping that we're seeing, and I just heard earlier today, somebody, like people are spreading around town, "Oh, you know what? If you've got stuff to dump, you can just go to the end of Redondo, because that's, they don't, they don't monitor it." Okay? So, it's happening, and it's real. And it's also costing the, costing the city money to actually pick all that up. The other thing we're seeing is increasing off-hour activity, and I just wanted to show you some, some footage from a Ring camera that's from one of the homes on Redondo Road. We see a 4:00 AM parade going on, we have another one at close to midnight, this is all in the last couple of months. We have another parade at like midnight again, 2:00 AM, then we have a lot of speeding going on as well, you know, you can see like how quickly people are speeding by there, and it's just continuing to go. You know, the last one we have here is just a couple days ago. So, this is not great, it's challenging for the people who live there, and we want to make sure that it's, you know, I think without, with that gate, that'll decline. The last thing I want to bring up is the recent change in CAL FIRE, in what they've done with the fire hazard zones in our area. And what's changed is, over the last month or so, they've released a new CAL FIRE hazard map, and what we know from what Scott and the team collected related to calls, is that fireworks is one of the main things that people call about, and if you look at the map, we're sitting, these fireworks are sitting basically right on top of a very high or high fire hazard zone. And so, if we, we don't do anything to try to solve that, it's just creating a lot of risk for the neighborhood, and that could, that could go quite a distance once it starts there. So, we, we support this gate closure, the gate's already there, we have people who are willing to close and open, and if there's any issues, the community in the area are very willing to step in and help, and...
Thank you for that. Thank you for your work on the presentation. Thank you also to city staff who shared that presentation with the Planning Commissioners this afternoon. Our next speaker is John Lortz.
Good evening. My name is John Lortz. I've had the opportunity to live in Half Moon Bay for 44 years. During the years, I served as a Half Moon Bay police officer. One of my responsibilities was closing the Redondo Beach Road gate. After sunset, visibility is significantly reduced, making it more difficult and dangerous for first responders to monitor the beach area effectively. There is an increased likelihood of accidents, especially in areas without proper lighting. Without supervision, individuals can find themselves in dangerous situations, such as getting caught in a dangerous riptide, sleeping, stepping on hazardous objects, or getting injured on uneven terrain. Areas left open at night can attract unlawful behavior, such as vandalism, underage drinking, and other forms of misconduct. Limiting access during evening hours will reduce the risk of criminal activity. After hours, when many beach tours leave behind trash or damage the environment, items such as broken glass, litter, and other pollutants can accumulate overnight, affecting wildlife and the general aesthetic of the beach. In conclusion, the benefits of closing the Redondo Beach Road gate in the evening hours is a logical proactive, proactive step to reduce crime, protect wildlife, minimize cleanup costs... cleanup costs, and provide a safer environment for all. Thank you for your time and your consideration, please be safe.
Thank you. Thank you for, uh, keeping your remarks to within, uh, three minutes, we appreciate it, that'll enable us to hear from everybody. Uh, Bruce Russell is our next speaker. I'd like to ask everybody in the audience too to, I know it's natural, but please refrain from applause or booing or hissing, we want this to be a, an environment where everybody is unintimidated and free to speak their mind. Please.
Yes, my name's Bruce Russell. I'm, uh, own the company that manages Ocean Colony, and I've also lived here since 2013, and I started working here in nineteen eighty-six. Um, obviously, we support the staff report and we think the CDP should be addressed. I want to comment on the letter you received from the Coastal Commission. First of all, I want to make this clear, OCP closed the gate from nineteen eighty-five until two thousand and fifteen. We're prepared, and no contribution from the city, to have our maintenance staff close it every day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, seven days a week, at five o'clock in the morning. So, it's not a matter of early morning, being closing too late. The sign says six and seven, we have to clo- open it at five, because our maintenance guys get there, and we're prepared to do that, just like we did for years. Second, the Coastal Commission letter suggests that residents are complaining about alleged, uh, illicit activities such as dumping and, uh, fireworks. The history of Redondo Beach Road is much worse than that. The history is not just alleged dumping and, uh, fireworks. In nineteen eighty-seven and nineteen ninety-four, there were two rapes committed at that site. There was, uh, three knifings in the nineties. There was a woman killed in a vehicle accident in two thousand and fourteen, and in two thousand and fourteen, three partiers that, I understand, were, uh, stoned on PCP, came over the fence, swam in the transit at Ocean Colony, and then proceeded knocking on people's doors. The sheriff came and arrested them. These are not alleged minor incidents, the incidents are much more serious than just dumping. Um, the real balancing test here is, what's to be lost by closing the gate at night in terms of public access versus what's to be gained? And that's the balance that you really need to look at. Um, closing the gate at night's not going to cut off families from having picnics at the beach, it's not going to cut off people from flying kites, it's not going to cut off people from dog walking, it's not, those people, those things don't occur at two or four o'clock in the morning. Um, and so, that balancing seems to me to be pretty clear, what the, uh, results should be. But the final comment I want to make is in footnote one of the Coastal Commission's letter, where they indicate that the night closure would adversely impact the public benefits and improvements that CLT is proposing for the project. This is what's really at stake. They want parking lots open by CLT and the restroom open twenty-four seven. And with all due respect, I think the city should have conditioned that approval on that gate being closed and those facilities being closed. The commission doesn't want it closed, and I understand that CLT has not agreed to make those facilities closed at night. I would suggest to you, that if you approve this and it gets appealed to the Coastal Commission, uh, that the conditions have changed then. If you can't gate this road, city should reconsider CLT's approval of that project. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Alan Hu.
My name is Alan Hu, I'm a twenty-plus-year resident of Coastside, and I'm a homeowner and resident in Ocean Colony, and, um, I'm here to ask for your support in, in support of the, uh, the gate closures and dusting down. And I, behind me, uh, there are many, many fellow homeowners, uh, that also represent the community. And I'd like to tell you why we feel so threatened, uh, so concerned about the vulnerability of that gate, that, if it were to remain open all night. And that is that there, uh, you know, first of all, it's a very dark street, no lights, unlike every other beach access in Half Moon Bay, there's no streetlights, there's very few houses, there's lots of shrubbery to hide, and so, somebody with bad intentions can usually find a place to, you know, sit and watch what's going on. Second thing is, there's about two hundred, uh, three hundred feet of metal fence, as you saw in the picture earlier. It's not solid, you can look right through it, right? And it's, and that's number one, it's completely transparent. Number two is five feet high, uh, and number three, there's a metal plate, uh, about eighteen inches up, perfect place to step on it and, and move it. Now, that fence is there not by bad design or bad thought, it was, it was required, uh, I won't, I won't say required by Mr. Russell, certainly knows. My point is though, as someone who lives there, and many of my friends feel the same way, can, can you picture yourself in your living room, in your dining room, at night? And anybody, uh, could be sitting outside, you know, on Redondo Beach Road, watching what's going on, seeing whose home, and more importantly, you see whose not home. And if they were to decide to do something about that, they'd just put one foot on the fence and hop over the fence. So, we feel threatened, so that at a very personal level, I ask you to consider how you would feel, you know, there, or your kids would feel. And so, uh, again, we ask your support, we don't think that, uh, it's a huge burden on anybody to close at night. We welcome the gate being open and for people to enjoy the beach the way it's intended to be enjoyed, but as Bruce Russell said, I mean, I don't know what intentional healthy purpose there is at four o'clock in the morning. Thank you very much, Chris.
Thank you. Uh, next speaker, I, I think I have this right, is Chris Crook. Did I get your name right?
You did, Chris Crook. Uh, I live, can you hear me better? Hello, hello, Chris? Hi. I was going to talk earlier about, uh, pretty much everything that has already just been said, so, I, in the interest of time, uh, as somebody who lives right there, I'll just say, I, I walk down that street, I think it's safe to say, every day, uh, once or twice, one night, and what I have noticed between cars that now choose to reside down there twenty-four hours a day, uh, and it does have the exact result of, that means it leads to more, more problems, more issues, whether it be as simple as trash that gets dumped, to quite, quite frankly, some behavior going on that, why would we want to have that in our community? I can't even imagine why we would. And, and this is a simple, just put the plan in place and, and close the gate, have it worked through, and avoid the whole problem, because it all happens in the evening, but it starts from, so unless forced people wants a gate to get out of this place. And everybody's, I couldn't agree more with what anybody else has already said far more eloquently than I ever will, but it is, it, you know, exactly what I'm trying to say.
Thank you. Uh, Colleen Lorts is next.
Um, I'm, uh, I'm just here to keep it short and sweet, thank you very much for your consideration of adopting this, and thank you to the city staff for all the work they've done around this, and I would hope you really consider adopting that proposal. Keep it short and sweet.
Thank you for that. Uh, Jeff DePue.
Jeff DePue, I also live on Carnoustie, and not as often as Chris, but out on the road most days, uh, not every day twice, but, um, during the day, it's hazardous enough, but at night, if you're trying to watch your dogs, you're taking your life in your hands. It's not wide enough for an F-250 or F-150 to be flying down the road at thirty miles an hour, let alone fifty, and that routinely happens. Um, in terms of escalation, there's a car that's been sitting out there along the road for five days now, uh, looks abandoned, apparently, I don't know if it is or not. Uh, the other day, I was out there and there's a dam that had been along the side of the road for a few days, then it was at the end, uh, lots of clothing, et cetera, strewn around it while I was walking by with the pub. Uh, two sheriff showed, two sheriff trucks showed up, they waited for a third to show up, and within, I think, five of them, approaching it on both sides of the vehicle before they were willing to get here. Um, and so, I don't know what the outcome of that was, I kept moving, um, probably took a video of what was going on, but I'm sure there's been reports around it. Um, and the amount of dumping has increased dramatically, most recently, a couple of toilets, sheds, and file cabinets. So, the deterioration is happening, and I think, uh, getting the road closed at night will help that a lot, I've never seen anybody dump something during the shed, but it's certainly piling up, breaking in and, and out for quite a while. Thanks.
Thank you. The next speaker is Sherri Booth.
Good evening and thank you. I am here, um, as a resident of Half Moon Bay, my backyard backs up on Redondo Beach Road, so I'm quite familiar with the parade of cars, which showed us on the video, the speed of the cars, the noise of the cars, and I think what I love about this proposal, and I hope you will support it, it doesn't deny access to legitimate, uh, people, people who legitimately want to go out and walk out there or ride their bike out there. I'm not sure I would do it at four AM, but I could do it with the gate closed a lot more safely than I feel like I would now. If it's a full moon and I want to go watch, and watch the moon on the water, I wouldn't do that now, but with the gate closed, I might feel a little more secure about that. So, thanks to the city for their work and full support, I guess, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is CF Booth.
Thank you. I'm CF Booth, Sherri's husband. As Sherri said, our house backs onto Redondo Beach Road, and I support the city staff recommendation to close the gate between sunrise and sunset. Uh, I think by doing so, uh, we will greatly enhance public safety, security, and social order. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh, David Waite, please.
Hello, I'm, uh, David Waite. I live on Carnoustie Drive, just a block off Redondo Beach Road. I've lived there for twelve years. Uh, when I first lived there, the gate was closed at night, and I'd be very happy to see that happen again. I emphatically agree with all the choir speakers, and I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Sharon Waite, please, next.
Hi, I'm Sharon Waite, and I live on Carnoustie Drive, for the same length of time as David Waite has lived there. And I just want to, uh, echo what everyone else has said. Um, when we first moved there, the gate was closed, it was, um, quiet, and it was safe, and since it's been open, we've seen a dramatic increase in problems, and so, we really support the proposal. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker is Katie Crook.
Hi, I'm Katie Crook. I live on Carnoustie as well, and don't want to waste your time reiterating what everybody else has said, but there's definitely been an increase in, you know, bad activity, and you do feel unsafe. Um, we moved here eight years ago, and when we first moved in, my husband and I would walk down Redondo with our dogs, and now with the very often, um, abandoned cars, and there's people living in the woods right there, um, we have, you know, many, many more pictures, and I just really hope that you support this initiative to close the gate. Um, you know, let, let the people enjoy it when it should be enjoyed. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Donato, please.
Hi, my name is Linda Donato, and I'm here to support the gate issue on Redondo Road. Um, I...
You speak into the mic a little bit more directly, please.
Better? Better?
Yes. Thank you.
So, and so, um, I'm here to support, um, the proposal for, um, install, uh, the gate issue on Redondo Road, um, for safety. Uh, my question is, I don't understand what the resistance is in helping to protect the neighborhood and people that live in that area. It's a simple issue, the closing and opening of the gates have already been handled, I don't, you know, the maintenance is going to be taken on by the city, and just for the protection and safety of the neighborhood, I don't understand what the resistance is, and I hope you would consider that in your decision. Thank you.
Thank you. Those are all the green cards I have, is there anybody else present who'd like to comment on this issue? If not, Bridget, you...
We have some.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, we have, um, four folks.
Could somebody raise their hands?
Oh, go ahead, and then we have...
Good evening, Albert Cuisinot, I live on Carnoustie Drive. Everybody's been drilled, uh, pointing their script on what's going on. I love Redondo Beach Road, uh, maybe I'm missing to clean that road as often as possible, I go up and down, and, uh, I just want to be a nice, safe place where we can enjoy not only the residents, but, uh, people from the, your joint communities. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the, in the room? If not, Bridget will shepherd the Zoom attendees, please.
Okay, uh, first we have in line Adrian Chanel, and then we'll follow with, with Kimberly Williams. Go ahead, Adrian, you can unmute and speak.
Good evening, my name is Adrian Chanel. My husband and I reside on Redondo Beach Road. Thank you for the opportunity to just speak tonight. I'm fully supportive of the city staff recommendation to close the gate from dusk to dawn, and I don't need to reiterate what many have said before me. Um, they all made great points as far as the safety, the dumping, uh, the unhoused in the fields, et cetera. So, I just hope that the planning commission will support this, and, thank you.
Thanks. Next is Kimberly Williams, followed by Mike Ferrera.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Thank you, commissioners, for the opportunity to comment. I'm Kimberly Williams, representing the local San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider Foundation. Many of us live on the coast side, and many of us have participated in cleaning this beach over the years. Um, so, while our local chapter, um, understands the reasons for this proposal for gate closure, we cannot support this permit request, and we have concerns that re-establishing gated access may set a precedent for more restrictions on public access in the future. It gives the appearance of putting a private gated community ahead of public interest and is directly in opposition to fostering public recreational access. This is no guarantee management of the gate would be consistent, and furthermore, we are concerned about private interests having control of gate access as part of any management plan. We understand the problems that you're facing here, but feel that there are other ways to address these issues. I mean, we wouldn't put a gate at the end of Kelly because of these same issues, you would address them in another way, which, which you have done over the years. Um, uh, let's see, and, and honestly, there are a lot of bad actors in public spaces, and if we had to do, address them in this way, a- all over the county, we'd have gated access all the way down from Pacifica to Pescadero. So, we don't feel this is the right way to address the issue. We encourage the city of Half Moon Bay to look at other ways to address these issues of complaint mentioned by the city staff's report. And the San Mateo County Chapter of Surf Rider agrees with the Coastal Commission's staff that this is inconsistent with the LCP provisions, and it fails, most importantly, it fails to meet the requirements of the Coastal Act. So, um, I'm sorry, but we cannot support this permit, and we urge you to look at other ways to address these problems. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Next is Mike Ferrera, followed by Sarah, his computer.
Good evening, commissioners, this is Mike Ferrera, uh, resident of Half Moon Bay, phoning in from Montana, actually. The, uh, these letter from the Coastal Commission seem to indicate that maybe not enough data was being given to justify reopening the gate, but I would like to add that what people have testified to here tonight, and especially the presentation, uh, that was given to you... the presentation that was given to you showing what's happening out there, should be incorporated into your findings. And I would urge that you do approve this CDP. I do want to add a little bit of a historical note as to why that gate went in. It went in because in the early 1980s, motorcycle gangs had developed a habit of showing up out there on holiday occasions, especially the Fourth of July. There was fireworks, liquor, and debris thrown down onto the beach, including even bathtub. I guess that was great for ice. Anyway, there was one such gathering where there was a big fight, and there was a revenge taken that set fire to a truck, a truck in which a woman had put her child to sleep. So you can imagine the terror that a lot of people felt as they tried to get into that truck in hopes of rescuing a child, which it turned out fortunately had been moved somewhere else. The truck, of course, burned to the ground. It was in response to that sort of thing that the police asked the city to allow them to establish that gate, because it was so difficult to enforce. It's a long, dead-end road. Takes a long, fair amount of time to get out there. It's very inefficient for patrolling, especially at night. That gate had nothing to do with Ocean Colony, and it's all about that kind of behavior. Uh, you know, I guess, I, there's a kicker to all of that. The guy that set the fire to that truck was named Stuart Alexander. You may have read about him in the 90s when he assassinated four inspectors that came to his sausage factory in Oakland. Bad people do take advantage of uncontrolled situations. And I think I appreciate the fact that all the people who've come here tonight have spoken courteously to this issue, and I would hope that you do appeal, I mean, you do approve this CDP. Thank you.
Okay, next is Sarah.
Hello, my name is Sarah Polgar. I'm with Coastside Land Trust, or CLT. And CLT wanted to express our support of the staff recommendation. CLT is, obviously, we're very supportive of coastal access. It's demonstrated by the Wavecrest Coastal Trail Project that you saw about a year and a half ago. But we care very much, and Stuart opened space to protect natural resources, and we're really concerned about the environmental damage caused by illegal dumping at the end of the road, at the end of Redondo Beach Road. This is occurring regularly, and I, you know, as you saw in that presentation by the first speaker, you know, there's all sorts of stuff, furniture, pallets, pieces of styrofoam, boxes, spilling, packing materials, electronics, plastic containers with mystery liquids. It's all there. And these are things arriving by vehicle, oftentimes at night, mostly at night, and by people taking advantage of the remoteness from, you know, other surrounding development. The dumping is a big harm here. It's, and we do think that closing the gate at night would help prevent quite a bit of it. And I want to point out, contrary to what a previous speaker said, the hours of operation for our improvements, like the parking and the bathrooms, that's daylight hours. So the, it's consistent with what the new Wavecrest Trail Project improvements would be. I have seen the Coastal Commission letter, and I totally understand the need to justify the closure to ensure that it meets the bar set by the Coastal Act policies and LCP policies. And I think that it would be helpful to have the guidance from the Coastal Conservant, uh, excuse me, Coastal Commission staff on the specific criteria that need to be addressed with further information and evaluation. You know, like, and examples from maybe elsewhere where a gate closure has been approved or not approved, and why, at least to help the city staff to be able to provide that information. I certainly think that the information shown in the, in the presentation is, at the beginning, would be helpful. And, you know, honestly, and then maybe it also tell the city whether the bar is just too high, you know, but to have some certainty, I think that that could be helpful information or guidance, I could say, from the Coastal Commission staff. I mean, if it's, if it's not possible, I think the city could also explore other options, you know, even moving the gate, you know, so that it's not blocking off the parking at night. But I do think that, from the perspective of protecting the resources out there, which is equally important, public trust, interest in, you know, this area, you know, the resources as well as public access, it's a balancing act, and I do think that this is a major problem. Once those things are out in the environment, you can't rein them back in, and I don't see enforcement in a remote area like this happening. That's just, I don't see that being feasible. So we are supportive of this recommendation from the staff. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. Next is Julie's iPad.
Hi, this is Julie Spagnolo. I also live along Redondo Beach Road, and we can see a lot of the road in the surrounding area from our, from our house. And I just wanted to add one other behavior that we experienced that I believe locking the gate at dusk would alleviate, and that is, vehicles are actually driving in the Wavecrest, you know, field. And so especially once CLT builds their really nice, you know, parking lot and bathrooms, I don't know if that gate is open, if that would prohibit vehicles from driving back there. They're doing a lot of damage, especially in this, in this time of year. You can see where the tire marks are, because it's wet back there. And so, you know, certainly they could probably access Wavecrest from a different area, but if you at least closed off Redondo, that would be one less access point for driving back there. I've seen vehicles need to be towed in the middle of Wavecrest, in the middle of the night. And so, again, I think that's behavior that all of us would really just, you know, like to see reduced or eliminated. Thank you. So I'm very much in support and appreciate the consideration.
Thank you. I think, I don't see anyone raising their, else raising their hands.
I'll close the public hearing then, and thank everybody for their comments, and come back to the patient planning commissioners and ask if there are any clarifying questions before we begin to deliberate. Commissioner Hernandez?
I had one that I'd like to direct back to city staff. I read the letter from the Coastal Commission, and I was surprised by the second-to-last paragraph in the letter where they said, "The proposed project fails to meet the above standards for environmental protection," I'm paraphrasing now, "for environmental protection and public safety," and with respect to blocking off access. And so specifically, "The required analyses to support such limitations and to consider project impacts and necessary mitigation are simply missing in this case." I am baffled by this, because we've heard quite a bit of evidence at the last hearing on Redondo Beach Road from the neighbors about the issues of safety, people jumping, bunny, doing bunny hops on the road that's there, all the safety issues that are there. And I'm surprised at this. And so I'd like to understand from city staff's perspective, like, could you respond to this? I mean, is this a surprise to you for this letter that we received today?
Yeah, I'd be happy to at least give, start us off with a response. And to answer your, the question, yes, we were a little bit surprised to receive this letter, you know, early, earlier this afternoon, given the, you know, the back and forth we've had with coastal staff, by email and in person. And the, the primary thing that is referenced here is, you know, the, the need to offset the, the parking that would be lost at night with the gate closures. That's, that's really what's, at least what, you know, we've evaluated the letter, and that's, that's the primary thing that's missing. And that would be wrapped into a, what they've referenced as a public coastal access management plan that would, you know, they're looking at a sort of a broader lens of, you know, other city facilities and, you know, how, okay, if this gate is closed at night, then if people do want to access the coast, then, you know, where can they go? And where's, you know, where is the offset for the parking that would be lost at night? So, and, you know, the, you're right, we did not provide any sort of offset of parking that would be lost at night.
What about issues around environmental damage and public safety? Did we provide sufficient evidence from the Coastal Commission's perspective on those two items? And do they have a standard that they can provide to us, or examples where, you know, a public safety standard can be met?
We, we did provide the, the call log, for example, from the sheriff's office, and at least for the, in the past four or five years. And we explained to coastal staff during our coordination meeting in December, you know, about the illegal dumping and other illicit activities that take place at the end of Redondo Beach Road, and that, that we would like to return to past practices, that the gate was closed for, you know, actually longer than we thought it was. So, you know, as you heard from one of the speakers tonight, it was closed on a regular basis for 30 years until, you know, 2015, when the gate stopped being closed. So it's really a matter of returning to past practice.
Could I, could I follow up on your question? Because I think it's a good one. I'm curious, Scott, in terms of what we've communicated to Coastal Commission, have they seen photos such as Ms. Hayward presented tonight, or, or have Coastal Commission staff visited out there with city staff to get a, a, boots on the ground, look at the situation?
To my knowledge, Coastal Staff has not seen the presentation that was presented to the commission tonight, but we would be happy to forward that to Coastal Staff. We did, years ago, during, because we have coordination meetings with Coastal Staff twice a year. One of our coordination meetings in the past, we did bring Coastal Staff out to the end of Redondo Beach Road. It was several years ago. So they are aware of the, the condition out there, more so than just viewing it on the screen.
Thank you. Commissioner Rems?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things for staff. Has there been any consideration as to why the gate was put in position it is, where it's located? In other words, it's, it's about two-thirds of the way up Redondo from Coast Highway, but not entirely to the end of the road?
To my knowledge, part, part of the location that was selected, as I have shown the, the slide here, is the, the request by Ocean Colony Partners to have their maintenance yard access from west of the gate. I think that had, was partially the reason. Also, it is a bit of a high point to avoid any sort of, you know, wet areas that are further west of the gate. But I, you know, what I can do is, we can certainly follow up with the commission, and I can chat with some of our maintenance workers that have been here for a while, and they would, I'm sure they'll, could give me a little more detail on that.
I guess, I guess what I'm getting at is, is the geographical position of that gate. Why wasn't it put at Coast Highway, or why wasn't it put at the end of the road close to the parking lot? But it seems to be somewhere in between. And I'm having some issues with that. I'm having some personal issues with that, because there may be some unintended consequences here, and maybe you could fill those in based on the 30 years of experience you have opening and closing that gate, or others. It just seems to me that, on the one hand, you could trap people coming from the beach, and on the other hand, you could create a parking lot going to the beach under certain circumstances without the ability to turn yourself around. And so I'm just kind of thinking out loud here, asking staff if they've looked at any of this, these kinds of issues, and whether or not, would it be better to reposition that gate in another location?
Yes, and to answer the question, I, we did evaluate other locations. And Maz, the city engineer, just jumped in, so maybe he could give a little background on, you know, sort of to flesh out the answer to your question. But one last point, I, I think part of this is that, given the limited resources, that, you know, it partially made sense to move forward with the existing gate, but I'll, I'll let Maz fill in more.
Thank you, Scott. Thanks, everyone. Great question. I think there is, there isn't, I don't have a good answer on where, why it was originally located in that exact spot. I think there is, we've talked a little bit about how we've gotten to this point. I do want to just reiterate that with respect to the access exiting the beach, part of the process that we've done with these types of closures would be to have sheriff's deputies to actually go and look, and do a sweep of the areas first before anything is locked up. And so we wouldn't be in a position of trapping anybody behind the gate. That's part of the process that we'd be following. As far as the potential concern, there is a potential concern with folks coming up to the gate beforehand and not being able to have an adequate place to turn around. We can take a closer look at that component. But we also are looking at additional signage to alert drivers as they're coming about the closure times, as well as a phone number for folks to call if, you know, for some reason, somebody gets stuck coming out on the beach itself. But again, the practice has been with the sheriff's office to do a sweep of the areas first, make sure that there's no remaining vehicles or patrons in those property, on that property, and then closing it on the way out.
Thank you, thank you for that. Just a couple more questions, if you don't mind, but one being, the sheriff's office, whether or not there's a schedule that they maintain going out there and patrolling this area, or do they just appear on a call? Do you know?
I know that our, the resources are a little tight, so they do generally do patrols. How often they go out there, I don't know offhand, but absolutely, they do respond to calls, as was evidenced in the logs. And those are just the, the calls that were made. I know that they've made, you know, trips that they've made out there, not everything shows up on those call logs. But we can certainly follow up with the sheriff's office. Obviously, with a new project moving forward in the future with Coastside Land Trust, that area is going to be something that needs to be paid, pay a little closer attention to.
I was just curious, because the evidence is there clearly that-
Right.
-people are dumping, and whether or not there's, you know, kind of a scheduled patrol going out there to kind of discourage that. But one last question, if you don't mind, Mr. Chairman.
Please, go ahead.
And this is for the city attorney. Are there any legal issues that may arise by, if we close, close the road, a public road? Is there any, anything that could come back and hurt us, unintended consequences?
Are you wondering if the city has the authority to close the road in general, or?
Yeah, they support.
I know there are rules related to, to road closures, and I think cities can set, you know, hours for, for closing roads in certain circumstances. I would need to look into that more closely. It's not something I've researched.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Clarifying questions, Vice Chair Gorn?
I have one clarifying question. Is there a gate at Kelly Beach, Francis Beach? Yes, and it's controlled by state parks. Is there a CDP on that? Not, not, I'm, I'm not aware of. There, there could be a, sort of a blanket CDP for, you know, multiple state parks, locations, but I have not looked into it. Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Gossett?
Is there a CDP for the gate that's closed at Poplar?
No, there- No, there is not, and we have discussed that with Coastal staff.
I had a follow-up question. Maz, what is your role with the city?
Thank you, Commissioner Hernandez. I am the City Engineer and Public Works Director. I've been with the city for about seven years now.
And part of your remit is the safety of the city. Is that fair?
Absolutely.
Are you aware of the reclassification that CAL FIRE had of that area that was presented today in terms of the fire risk?
Yes, like many other staff and other agencies, we all receive the new CAL FIRE maps from the state at the same time. And just a quick plug, the Coastside Fire Protection District is having a meeting tomorrow night to discuss the new hazard maps, if anybody's interested.
I had the pleasure of running along Redondo Beach Road earlier today, and I observed the area that's roughly aligned with that fire risk is where there's a pretty substantial eucalyptus grove. It looks like most of the eucalyptus, much of the eucalyptus grove is behind the gated area. In your opinion, as one of the individuals responsible for safety, will this have a meaningful impact on reducing fire risk in our community? Or does it have the potential to reduce fire risk in that area for illicit activity?
I think when you consider the types of activities that have been presented by the public, specifically some of the illegal firework activities, I think there's definitely that, that would be a risk that could be reduced and hopefully eliminated. As far as the hazard maps, that's something that is, needs to be discussed with Coastside Fire and City Council as far as how we address those moving forward. But I would say that with this, we can at least curb the activities that could lead to some of those potential fire, fire risks.
And looking at the call data that was in front of us, roughly 40% of the calls that I saw were fireworks-related. So is that, and do you, I could ask the crowd, but we're not supposed to do that. Is it your sense that that's an underrepresentation of the fireworks activity that's happening down there?
Yeah, because I don't, I think, I think folks can say that, you know, what's been reported, I'm sure there's some activities that may have happened that were not reported. So I would say that we had, we know of those incidents that happened based on the call logs, but it's likely, based on some of the testimony we heard, that there's more than what was just reported.
Okay. And have you, I noticed a trend in the data, which looks like a sharp spike in the number of police calls in the first quarter of this year. It looks like there's a doubling or tripling of reported police activity through the first couple of months. Do you or other city staff have an opinion on, I mean, we've heard stories, but do you have an opinion or a position on whether or not there's more illicit activity happening along Redondo Beach Road recently?
I mean, based on the call log, that's, that was the first indication that it seems like it's increased. Certainly the calls have increased, so that's likely.
Thank you.
I get the sense that we're ready to start deliberations. I'd just kick, kick off deliberations with one observation. For the first time in two or three months, I was out at Redondo Beach parking lot this morning, and I observed, and the dumping that people have reported, it's impossible to miss, unfortunately. I've observed also that the parking lot erosion, the craters that exist out there now have seemed to me to reduce the usable safe parking out there till about, to about eight cars' worth. So it's, it's, the erosion has obviously accelerated there, and the dumping and public safety issues are very real in my mind. But that's all, that's all I'll say for the moment, and invite my fellow commissioners to weigh in. Vice Chair Gordon?
So, I, um, I guess the, I think it's important to look at what the Coastal Commission is concerned about and for staff to look at it, because it seems very clear to me that all the improvements proposed by Coastside Land Trust are at risk by not, by, by not having that gate shut. And I, I think that's, hasn't really been adequately maybe communicated to Coastal Commission. I, so I get the need for coastal access, for unlimited coastal access. Like I've been in Southern California where they've shut gates to keep people out from the coast, and that's happening at Martins Beach as well. Personally, I don't see that here. I don't, I, I see that we're opening access, not shutting off access. And, and I think it's really important to communicate that to the Coastal Commission. They want to know, how does it violate, I won't, you know, they say it violates the Coastal Act, because it's okay. So that the, that coastal access, the coastal, the coastal use has to not just be retained, but maximized. That's what they pushed. So I would argue that the gate maximizes use and it maximizes protection of those natural resources. I think that Coastal Commission sees it as an annoyance, right? The dumping, the crime, the, the constant, you know, concern by the neighbors, that that's an annoyance to be dealt with. But I think it's more than an annoyance, and if we can, can say that it's a necessity, that the gate is actually needed, just the way the gate is needed at Kelly Beach or, you know, Francis Beach, just the way it's, you know, it's needed at other beaches, all the state beaches are gated at night. So I think that that is a, is an argument to say that it's necessary, because we're protecting what Coastside Land Trust is doing out there. I just don't see that there's much of an argument against that. So that's what I would say. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Gossett?
Thank you. Well, to me, a picture is worth a thousand words, really. And I appreciate this balancing act, but I don't see law enforcement as solving the problem that we're having there today. And given the fact, I heard one of the speakers who spoke on Zoom, who talked about a vehicle being towed in the middle of the night out of the wave crest area. Well, there are wetlands back there, and they probably were stuck in a pond or a wetland where we have environmentally sensitive little creatures, like the California red-legged frog and the San Francisco garter snake. And we want to protect this environment, and we have this great project coming forward with CLT. And, and Sarah spoke tonight about how important it is to protect that environment out there. And with that project that's coming forward, we, I see this gate as, as providing access, protected access. And so I'm, I'm in support. I'm going to state that right now. I am in support of staff recommendation to close the gate at sunset and open it early in the morning at sunrise. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman?
Please.
I too will support this proposition, but with some reservations in terms of opening and closing. Morning's okay, 5 o'clock's okay, but I would prefer to see a later hour in the evening, only because some people like me have a desire to go down to the beach, maybe at 9 or 10 o'clock. Some don't. It's nice to watch the moon glistening off the water, or to meditate on the bluffs. All of that is very nice, and we don't want to deny that to people who like to do that. I haven't taken a head count, but I'm sure there's someone out there. On the same, on the same plane, I'm very, very sensitive, and everything that I'm talking about here will be trumped by public safety. And I'm very touched with what the audience has said and presented and shown, not only with the trash, but the potential public safety. And that's why I'm, my concern with the juxtaposition of the gate. Maybe we could look at that in the future at some time to move it, so that the safety is heightened for those between Coast Highway and the existing position of the gate, if we're going to go down that path. So if, if my fellow commissioners would agree or support maybe 9 o'clock or 10 o'clock instead of sunset, which changes every day, and it's subjective to whoever's out there maintaining that gate for closure. So I think a fixed time, in my view, would be much better to close the gate and a fixed time to open it. Within certain parameters, I mean, 15 minutes either side is not a, not a deal breaker. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Hernandez?
Thank you. I agree with the comments that my fellow commissioners have made, and I agree that we should have a gate there, we should have it locked, and we should have some hours of when it is agreed upon that we shut. I share Commissioner Ream's position that we should consider something like two hours after sunset or some other target, because it's reasonable for people to be able to enjoy a beach, especially people who don't necessarily, aren't as capable as others of getting down to enjoy the beach at a later time. So I do think that's something I'm very supportive of, of extending the hours. I'm also, I observed when I was running, and there's photographic evidence of this, that there's an informal turnaround area near the gate. It'd be great to make sure that there is some kind of formal turnaround area if we move forward with this, just because it's easy to fall into a ditch there. I will also sort of echo the comments that I've heard from everybody here. The end of Redondo Beach Road looks like it's falling off a cliff. I mean, it's awful, right? And it, the rate of decay feels like it's probably increasing, and some people feel uncomfortable by the folks who are camping out overnight there. But CLT has a project that is going to restore the habitat, and it's going to make bike and pedestrian trails, which make the area more accessible. It's adding parking, which is going to allow at least as many people to park in the area, and they have a, if necessary, a potential to add additional overflow parking. So there's a good project that is going to address many of the concerns about the quality of what's happening on Redondo Beach Road, and I think that's, that's important. I don't think we should just dismiss the concerns raised by Surf Rider. I've been to many beach cleanups with Surf Rider. I know how much they recognize that there's trash and there's issues, but we do want to make sure that we're not just taking away access willy-nilly, and respectfully, not to the benefit of a wealthy part of Half Moon Bay that lives in a gated community adjacent to Redondo Beach Road. I don't think that's what this is about, but I do think that we need to make sure that whatever we're doing passes muster with the Coastal Commission, because we have at least one party who's represented their opposition to what we're doing and who's likely to appeal the project. And so what I think we should consider is establishing, is it in fact that we need to establish parking off-site for, to accommodate what the Coastal Commission's acting for? Because that's a big ask. I don't think we have a lot of parking spots, and I don't think any of our citizens who have parking spots are going to volunteer them to, for folks to camp out in their businesses or at their homes. So I'd like to make sure we understand what it is that the Coastal Commission is really looking for here, and what the criteria are from a public safety perspective. We've had at least 21 comments from folks here and 30 people present who've expressed concern about public safety. We've received evidence about fire risk. There are eucalyptus trees. We've heard evidence from the Director of Public Works about, you know, there is, I'll be careful about putting words into your mouth, but it certainly won't make the project better to not have a gate. And so, so I, before we move forward, I'd like to make sure that we understand what is the criteria that will pass muster, so that we don't have to worry about an appeal. We don't have to deal with the litigation. We don't have to pay for lawyers to go deal with that. We can maybe have city staff spend a little time working with the Coastal Commission to establish clearly what the criteria are. Because I think we've heard, not just at this hearing, but at previous hearings, overwhelming evidence of issues. We've seen new evidence entered, not just the police log, but the Ring camera logs, which show evidence of people using the beaches. I'd like to understand what that, what the criteria are. And I don't see us being able to put parking in. But, I mean, that'd be my recommendation, is that we consider extending this hearing to a date uncertain, so that city staff have enough time to collect that. Because I'm under the impression that we don't have a clear answer from the Coastal Commission on exactly what they want. There's a little bit of supposition.
Yeah, I see the logic to that, Commissioner Hernandez. Like, my point of view on this project and the Coastal Commission feedback is that important and large amount of benefits as far as public safety, wildfire risk, environmental health will be gained. And what will be lost is, as I said a few minutes ago, what has been whittled down to about eight safe parking places out there. Once upon a time, it was probably 30 or 40, but when I was there today, there were six or eight cars on that southern edge of that dirt lot, and there were several parked on the road, which is not safe parking, because that road is so narrow. So I think that is a, that, that loss of, of the parking that exists in the current form would, would be very minor compared to the public safety benefits that we would gain. The, the gate closure probably is necessary for the CLT project to go forward, which then would result in a very large number of, of safe parking places coming into existence there. So I, maybe we need to ask staff's opinion on this, but I, I'm thinking, I'm leaning in the direction of approving this tonight, and if there is middle ground to be, to be reached by understanding Coastal Commission better, that that could be worked out downstream of that. And, and that way, by approving it, we, we have heard the over, as you pointed out, the overwhelming public comments and, and concerns about public safety, and that, that strengthens our argument with, with Coastal Commission. I also, I also want to respectfully disagree with you and Commissioner Ream's about the clo, about the hour of, of closing. So I think if our argument is all about closing at dark for public safety, to say, well, maybe close two hours after dark, I think that, I think that really weakens that argument. I mean, if public safety is served by closing at dark, which maybe some of our law enforcement friends would, would, would remind us, then we ought to stick to that. I don't, is this, is this a good point to ask if staff has an opinion about the, the way forward?
It's a fine point to ask, yeah. So as Scott mentioned, we did meet with Coastal Commission staff, and the feedback that we got from them in that meeting was that a reasonable, an argument that, that gave a reasonable chain of logic and, and substantiated the safety and environmental benefits of the, of the closure would be sufficient. But in Coastal Commission staff's defense, they also didn't have an application and a staff report before them. They didn't have this testimony before them. And, and it's not clear from their letter what exactly the mitigation has to be and how much flexibility there is on that. So I think that it would be, it could be valuable to go back and talk with them more and see what kind of findings we can make to support the case. and see what kind of findings we can make to support the case.
And, and Mr. Chair, if I could add also during the coordination meeting, that it, it did come up the, the gate at Poplar as well as Way Press, that eventually the right thing to do would be to issue coastal development permits for those two gates too, and that sort of looking, you know, at a, at a, sort of a wider scope on coastal access. So, but, you know, maybe the, the right thing to do in this case, you, you might consider adding an additional condition of approval, you know, directing staff to work with Coastal Commission on, you know, the, the overall coastal access approach and.
I'm actually not so sure that's the best approach right now. I think we have one project in front of us, and that's probably the best place to start. And then we can, we can go from there and get a better understanding of what the requirements are.
Okay. Well, so just, so I'm clear about this. If we were to approve this tonight, and it would, and if it were appealed, would that be an inferior way of, of, of trying to reach understanding with Coastal Commission? Would, would you prefer for us to continue it, for you to, to do that work with them?
I think that's up to you, but we're fine.
Put you on the spot or anything, but.
Yeah, I think that's up to you, but it, we're fine with it, and there could be some benefit in talking more with the Coastal staff.
I just wanted to add one thing, which is, you know, when they close the state beaches at sunset, they don't actually close them at sunset. They don't put the gate upright at sunset because everyone's watching the sunset, and then there's all the time after the sunset. I mean, they, they, they take all that into account. And so, you know, I think making a, a, sort of just a set time of nine o'clock or 10 o'clock, which changes with the seasons, I, I think, I think you could just sort of trust that, that, you know, there's not going to be sheriffs rousting people and saying, you gotta get off the beach at, right at sunset. I think it's more like they're looking to see, is there anyone left? And if they are, then we have to come back, you know, those kinds of things. They, I think they're kind of reasonable in that way. And so I think it's a really good call because that I did wonder if saying that it's open longer might appeal to the Coastal Commission to say that that access is extended, so that's a possibility. And maybe you want to consider that as a possibility. But I don't think anyone would really object to that because I think that's kind of what we're talking about anyway. When you say close at sunset, you're really talking about sometime after sunset. So the other thing I would say is that the, in the Coastal Commission letter, they say that the gate hasn't been used in 15 years, but it's been 10, nine and a half, whatever you want to call it. So I'm sure that's obvious to you, but 15 sounds like a lot, and 10 doesn't sound like as much. Nine doesn't sound like much. Anyway, thanks.
I think you're right about the timing. I've, I've seen this in action at Poplar Beach where the, the sheriffs begin to remind people that the beach is going to be closed, and at the end of twilight, which is usually, what, 30 minutes after sunset when it's dark, they, they begin to lock the gate.
Yeah, that's, that's the practical effect that I'm going for, and I think that's the practical effect maybe that Commissioner Ream's is going for is, you know, we want people to be able to enjoy the beach. And just to be clear to everybody here, the beach is always open. It's just the parking lot and the road that aren't open. People can use the beach anytime they want to. They can't do anything they want on the beach, but, but that's, the beaches are always open. The other thing is they, there's recently a pilot project in, on Poplar Beach where they extended the hours on the weekends to 10:00 PM. And there were no reported issues either from the fire department or from the Sheriff's Department during that time. So small window, two weeks, four weekend days, but it's not necessarily the, the hours. It's the feeling that you can get away with stuff, and I think that creating more of a culture of accountability on our beaches and making people feel like there are rules and they're clear-cut, I think is helpful, and, and hopefully we can encourage people to be more respectful on our beaches. Certainly, I saw, as you did, the evidence of people dumping trash and people parking in ditches and on wetland and, you know, in inappropriate places, so that, that will be going away soon. So I don't know if we've gotten like a clear consensus on what you guys want to do. I'm, my concern is, big picture, we want to try to work as amicably as we can with the Coastal Commission, and I think there's an opportunity to get clarification and present the additional, in my opinion, overwhelming evidence around public safety and get feedback on it, you know, before we have to face an appeal. So I would encourage us to consider that, and if not, I'm okay, you know, moving forward. It just, you know, it may be something that we could handle delicately with, you know, a couple of weeks and circle back.
Can I ask a question about that, Leslie? Could we continue this to a date certain so that we know that this may come forward in a month or six weeks, so this doesn't drag out for another six months?
Yeah, of course.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Yeah, I'm, I'm torn a little bit between the, the two courses forward. I think it would be most respectful to the, all the public comment we've got tonight to approve the project and take our chances with Coastal Commission, but I, I can't really argue against your logic. I mean, our relationship with the Coastal Commission is, is one of the most important that the city has, and if Director Laco thinks it may be constructive to have dialogue with them before we take action on it, I, I certainly can agree to that. Let's say one other thing before we have a vote. I hope that maybe we cannot micromanage the, the timing of the closure of the gate for the, for the sheriffs. I think they know how to do that, and they know how to do it so their people aren't out there in the dark, you know, putting themselves in, in trouble. And, and one, one last comment I've been making, wanting to make, and I don't know if it's helpful or not at this late date, but as Commissioner Ream's mentions, if the gate were right off of Highway One, it would certainly reduce the opportunity for illegal dumping and other activities much more than being a half mile in towards the beach. The, the informal turnaround place that Hugh mentioned, I, I fear may become the next dumping ground.
One more thing, can you, through the chair? I do want, I don't want you to think that my question about moving forward to a date certain doesn't mean I wouldn't support a vote tonight to issue the CDP, so I'd like to be clear about that.
Just one point of clarification on, on the timing that I brought up. I brought that up deliberately so that we had a clear understanding that there wouldn't be a fixed time, and we're, we're asking people to leave without how you expressed it, that given them that opportunity.
Exactly, yeah.
Thank you for that clarification.
Just on the moving of the gate, I don't really have a strong opinion around where the gate should be, but there are a number of homeowners who might be inconvenienced by placing the gate further to the east because they would have more restricted access to their property. Maybe they want that, maybe they don't, but I think there's a cost and some other considerations associated with moving the gate.
Perhaps the city manager can enlighten us.
I, I'm not here to speak about the location of the gate.
Okay, well, feel, feel free, whatever comment you have, Matthew.
Talking about the location of the gate changes the dynamics of all of this, and, you know, we're looking at budget, and it's a different discussion, I think, with the Coastal Commission. To the hour issue, I'll just point out in our municipal code where it talks about park rules and hours, it's very clear that sun, you know, parks and, and other facilities close at sunset and open at sunrise, but there's actual language that says in any facility where there's an expectation of spectators watching the sunset, that they're given 30 minutes after sunset to depart. So I think you just stick to the municipal code and we're set.
Perfect.
That's what the sheriff follows.
Perfect. Do we want to ask what the date certain would be?
Yeah, Bridgette and I were just looking at the, the upcoming schedule. I think there's space on the 422 agenda, but Coastal Commission staff is really overworked. I'm not sure that we could coordinate with them by then, so we're probably looking at May 13th or May 27th.
Through the chair, can I just ask, is that something you want? Do you want it to be delayed to a date certain so that you have that time? Or, or, I didn't, I didn't hear you say that. Is that something you want?
If that's what the Planning Commission wants, there are some benefits to doing that. And that is that we would have the opportunity to talk with the Coastal Commission and, and understand what it is that they're asking for in terms of mitigation. I think the rest of it we understand a little better, but the mitigation part is really, that really threw us. So it would give us the opportunity to do that. There's always relationship building that happens with that. But yeah, the decision of want is really the Planning Commission's decision, so we'll, we'll follow your lead there.
So, so personally, if, if there's not a need to delay, I would, I would say, I would be in favor of just voting for it now.
Well, I, I get the sense that that's where we're at, even though I have no real objection to Commissioner Hernandez's path forward.
I would like to read a motion that we adopt this PDP 24-052, the CDP, to allow the retroactive approval for and operation of the existing gate across Redondo Beach Road within the public right-of-way in the PUD zoning district and the planned development district land use designation.
Well said. Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Thank you.
There are some conditions of approval that we've talked about, so I'd like to make a motion to add a few conditions of approval. One is making sure that there's a turnaround space on the road that is safe and sufficient. I think there may be other recommendations, and also, you know, just to make hours of access consistent with current municipal code. I don't know if there's any others.
Well, I'll second your amendment.
Can we talk about that just a little bit? Is that okay?
Sure, yeah.
So what happens if there's not a turnaround on the east side of the gate, and we put that in as a condition of approval? I'm a little worried about that.
I mean, we have a safety issue. I mean, I mean, CAL FIRE hasn't asked us for a turnaround, I guess, so I'm looking to city staff.
Through the chair, no, CAL FIRE's requirement is the Knox box, so if there's a emergency, they will, they have the ability to unlock the gate and access and turn around at the end of the parking lot.
Can I modify the recommendation to recommend that we put in a turnaround? Evaluate the location, the city director of public works discretion? And also, we want to make sure that we provide the testimony that's been entered today and invite members of the public who provide video graphic evidence to submit their feedback to the city so that we can add that to the testimony that we put in front of the Planning Commission so that we have as much evidence as possible. So Coastal Commission?
I'll, I'll sec, second your modified amendment. Do I remember correctly, in, in a case like this, we vote on the amendment first? Who's up on our rules of order?
I think the, we could just make a modified motion.
Make a modified motion. Can you modify the motion?
If she's okay with the motion, the added.
All right, so Commissioner, Commissioner Gossett is signaling that she's okay with her motion modified that way, so we can take a vote on the motion.
I think we need a second, so I'll second that.
Okay. Do you want to, well, you're asking for a roll call?
Please.
Okay. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Ream's?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved.
Thank you, everybody. Let's take a seven-minute break till 9:00 PM before we take up our next agenda item.
And I hope, I hope everybody here stays around for the SEQA training. It's going to be a real barn burner.
[laughing]
And Commission meeting. Back to our, on to our next agenda, which is looking at the Michigan certifications. We are going to walk us through that. Thank you.
Good evening, Planning Commission. Tonight I'll be speaking to you about the 2025 Measure D scoring and the ratification process for the Planning Commission. This is an annual item, but we'll still go through all the background and those kinds of things for the public and our new commissioners. So first I'll walk us through the background on Measure D. Then we'll go over the 2025 submittal summary. I'll provide some background as well on the review process and staff's process for scoring, and then we'll remind you of the recommendations provided within the staff report and discuss the next steps. So Measure D is the city's growth management system. Its purpose is to control the rate and quality of development in the city on an annual basis. Measure D was adopted by voters in 1999, but was not effective until 2009, following the Coastal Commission certification. Prior to that, it was Measure A, which was implemented. Measure D accommodates up to 1.5% population growth annually. The number of allocations are set by the city council each year in December. It's, that 1.5% is split between the downtown and the outside of downtown. Both downtown and outside of downtown get 0.5%, and then an additional bonus 0.5% can be added to the downtown area. The only exemptions from Measure D for residential units are the replacement of existing dwelling units and density bonus units. Within the Measure D application, it includes a checklist which applicants are to fill out with their submittal. This checklist includes a variety of scoring, scoring criteria, which was established in our municipal code for Measure D scoring, and its foundation was early green building checklists, which were most recently updated around 2023. Initially, this scoring didn't anticipate ADUs, so over the years, most specifically in 2020 and 2021, there were some modifications to what scoring criteria was used, and then 2021, additional interpretations were provided for some of the criteria. This scoring criteria is only implemented when more allocations are applied for than are available. And since state ADU law began being implemented in Half Moon Bay, got their ADU ordinance codified, that's when we first saw, started seeing an uptake in ADUs, which has resulted in more allocations being applied for annually than are available in outside of downtown. So the scoring criteria has had to be applied annually since 2021. So this year for 2025- And since state ADU law began being implemented in Half Moon Bay, got their ADU ordinance codified, that's when we first started seeing an uptake in ADUs, which has resulted in more allocations being applied for annually than are available in outside of downtown. So the scoring criteria has had to be applied annually since 2021. So this year for 2025, there were 45 allocations determined to be available for the downtown area. This was split into 23 base allocations and 22 bonus allocations. Since there were less allocations applied for than are available in the downtown area, which was only two were requested so far, those allocations have already been awarded. And the remaining allocations will be available through September. Outside of downtown, which is why we're really here tonight, there were 22 allocations available, and we received 47 allocation requests across 28 applications. And you can see that breakdown here across mostly single families and ADUs with existing single-family units, but also some multifamily and then some that fit into another category, such as a duplex with ADUs or a single family with multiple ADUs. This side shows you the breakdown of the scoring summary for the applications for this year. The green indicates what is being recommended for ratification tonight. And the blue would not be receiving allocations and would be deferred either for transfers in September if they remain available and at city council's discretion, or for, or reapply in 2026. In the yellow, this is new, where you likely haven't seen this on the summary in previous years. This is where the recommendations come in. Tonight, we are asking you, the planning commission, to make a determination on how to allocate the 22nd available allocation because at the cutoff line, the next highest scoring application is for two allocations and only one remains available. Here, it just helps to simplify the scoring that you just saw. This is more for us to come back to if it's helpful. To break this down further, 11 projects are recommended for ratification, totaling 22 allocations. That currently consists of five ADUs, four single families with ADUs, which makes up eight allocations, one multifamily project with five allocations, and a single family with an ADU and junior ADU. And then one final allocation to be determined. Here you'll see the types and number of projects that are being recommended for deferral. So the way this scoring that you saw on the summary is broken down is first, the applicants fill out their checklist going through the scoring criteria. And then staff goes through each application and cross-checks every item on the submittal or on the application. If there's any need for interpretation, staff takes a lot of time to consider that thoroughly and discuss across the department. And then we'll go back through the submittals to ensure that that interpretation has been applied consistently across all of the applications. After the scoring has been finalized on staff's side, we'll go ahead and notify all of the applicants individually and offer meetings for any applicants that would, may like to review their scoring. And if there is any sort of concern with the applicant in regards to their scoring, staff will review that and double-check that that is correct and verify all interpretations have been applied equally. For 2025, we did have one update to our scoring process. This doesn't modify any of the criteria, but we did apply a new calculation for item or criteria 1C, which is relating to how many points you receive based on the amount of adjacent properties which are developed. So this is encouraging infill. And the new scoring provides a more objective and specific score, whereas previously it may have required a bit more interpretation. But this is based on an application guide and instructions that was found and applied with Measure A. And so this is that same criteria that carried forward into Measure D. And this is just reapplying how that was initially scored. And you can see how that's more specifically broken down within attachment two to the staff report, which provides the information on other interpretations that have been made over the years. Scoring has been, become increasingly more competitive, or the application process is becoming more competitive and close annually. The cutoff line from being above and below has become closer and closer to, this year, we're around 0.75 to 0.25 in scoring. And many applicants have maxed out their scoring, where we've seen some applicants reapplying over the years, where they've done all that they can to maximize their scoring. And really, the only remaining option for some applicants to have any higher scoring would be to elect for deed restriction, which is the highest scoring item in the checklist. This year, we did have five applicants elect for, to deed restrict at least one of the units for below-market-rate housing. So aside from below-market-rate housing, there's pretty minimal variability. But some of the items that do have some impact on the scoring still are the density question, home size efficiency, and walkability. For the most part, most applicants are maxing out on all the other criteria that are within their control. So tonight, we're going to ask the planning commission to determine how the remaining 22nd Measure D allocation should be awarded. There's two options to consider here. One would be to award the remaining allocation to the next highest scoring applicant. But that application is for two allocations, so it would only be awarding the ADU. And that would be conditioned upon, so any development would then be conditioned upon receiving the Measure D for the single-family dwelling before they could move forward with additional permitting. Option two would be to award the remaining allocation to the next applicant that has only applied for a single allocation. And so that would be for one ADU. Additionally, we have a recommendation for, once that determination has been made, to direct staff to prepare modifications to the recommendations for the approval of the allocations and additionally, adopt the resolution than ratifying the 2025 Measure D scoring. Lastly, the planning commission could consider making recommendations to city council with respect to transferring allocations in September if downtown base allocations remain available. This would still be at the city council's discretion, but it could be helpful to provide some feedback for them to consider come that time. So the planning commission's decision will be appealable to the city council. And then, like I said, if any remaining downtown base allocations are available, city council may consider transfers after September 1st. And then the next application period will be in January 2026. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. I expect that the commissioners will have clarifying questions, but given the late hour, I'd like to get to our two members of the public who are wanting to comment here. First up is Kevin and Colton Palmer.
Hi there. I'm Colton Palmer, here with my father, Kevin Palmer. I've been doing architectural design here on the coast side for the past five years. Over those years, I have submitted and received several Measure D allocations, very familiar with the process. We're here today because we believe our Measure D application was scored unfairly. We are hoping that you, the planning commission, will direct the planning department to re-score our application. We applied for a duplex with two ADUs on Pine Street in Half Moon Bay. The Measure D submittal requires an application D to the property and a site plan to complete the submittal. We believe we were unfairly scored on item 4B, which states all home front entrances can be seen from the street. The site plan I had submitted accurately showed the first story of the proposed construction. The front door is clearly shown facing the street. On the site plan, there is a staircase leading up to the second story. While the second story is not shown, since the staircase is at the rear of the structure, the planning department assumed that the door of the second story is at the rear of the structure as well. This is a completely unfair, ridiculous assumption based off of the information given. I ask you to rectify this unfair assumption by the planning department by having our application re-scored. Thank you.
My name is Kevin Palmer. Yeah, we met with staff. We talked about it. They said, hey, we assumed the door was in the back. I said, well, you assumed wrong. Here's the correct way. And they said, okay, we'll take it under advisement. And they still did not score us properly. So we're a little dismayed and concerned why that process happened. I, my company's been here for 40 years. I have a personal obligation to my employees, which we have about 30 of them. All live and work in Half Moon Bay. I'm making employee housing for four units for four of my guys. They know it. I don't want to wait a whole nother year to start this process because we're kind of excited about making this thing go forward here. So we, I'd love for the planning commission to direct staff to reevaluate our scoring and take what, what I said under advisement, please.
Well, thank you both. I know that we're not to have back-and-forth conversations here, but it seems to me it would be a simple matter for staff to meet with these applicants and resolve any confusion.
You mean discuss it right now? Or, sorry, I just didn't understand what you meant by to meet again?
Well, the applicants seem to think there's miscommunication. And if that's the case, you meeting with them would seem to be the logical way to resolve it. I would...
Through the chair, can I make a recommendation?
Sure.
Perhaps we could ask the applicant or city staff to send us a copy of the plans while we hear other comments and maybe take a recess to figure out what's happening?
Can I say something first? Is that okay?
Please.
So this is, this is the first time I've been through this process. And I have to say, it is gut-wrenching and heartbreaking because there are so many people that don't end up qualifying, who have very good reasons why they want to build. And it is imperative that the process be as objective as possible. Otherwise, it gets very, very messy. And in this case and in all cases, the application states all applicants are required to submit a site plan with the Measure D application. Floor plans, elevations, landscape plans are not required, but can be helpful. Project plans should demonstrate how the project conforms to the allocation scoring criteria and will be used by city staff to support the scoring process. So what happens if city staff then ignores that for one person? Then there's a trickle-down effect, and it becomes very, very messy. So I just want to put that on the record and put it out there for your consideration.
So I'm guessing you're implying that the matter's closed as far as staff is concerned?
I would say that it was not a miscommunication, that staff met with every applicant about their allocations. And it's more a matter of a really terrible process for anyone to go through and just an unfortunate outcome.
We have public comment open. Do you want to close out public comment? Maybe we can come back to this.
We're still in the public hearing, yep.
Well, let me invite the next speaker to comment, and then we'll do as you suggest, Commissioner Hernandez. Connor French and Caitlin Barnes, please.
Yeah, I'm Connor French. Live at 460 Poplar in Half Moon Bay. Good evening, Chair Riddick and commissioners. Thank you for the opportunity to speak. As I said, my name is Connor French, and I'm one of the homeowners at 460 Poplar Street, along with my partner, Katie Barnes, and our family, which includes our three young children, one of whom is still awake with us, our au pair and our aging parents, including one suffering from Parkinson's disease, whom we're hoping to bring closer as they begin to need more support. Both Katie and I are only children, and the responsibility to care for our parents falls solely on us. We're asking you tonight to award the final Measure D allocation for 2025 to our property for the construction of a modest ADU. This project is shovel-ready, has no dependencies on future allocations, and can be built immediately with minimal environmental impact for need for infrastructure. It's a small project with an enormous impact for our family. Importantly, we're not developers. This is not one of many projects. This is our primary residence, a historic home in an existing residential neighborhood. And we're simply trying to adopt, adapt it responsibly to meet the challenging needs of our multi-generational family. We received a score of 113, tied with the next highest applicant. And we believe we've demonstrated full compliance with the city's scoring criteria. However, we would like to respectfully raise a question about the scoring of walkability. 460 Poplar and 775 Third Avenue are just blocks apart, both with an easy walking distance of Main Street, the library, parks, schools, and the beach. We walk hybrid to and from school every day. It's not clear why there would be a point difference between the two sites for pedestrian access. We believe a second look at that detail is warranted, especially when a single point determines who receives a year-long opportunity to build housing and who does not, and that a single point would have placed us above multiple other allocations. We also want to briefly address a line in today's staff memo suggesting we were contacted about our scoring and did not contest it. Respectfully, we were not aware of that. And had we known, we absolutely would have asked about it. We arranged our whole week to be here tonight, adjusting our young kids' schedules because this matters so deeply to us. We're not asking for special treatment, only clarity, fairness, and consideration. Stepping back, this is the most efficient and equitable use of the final allocation. Unlike other applicants who require multiple allocations and are unable to proceed until further awards or transfers occur, the 460 Poplar ADU is ready to move forward immediately. It represents efficient, low-impact infill housing that the city, the state, and the community consistently identify as a priority. This project aligns with the city's local coastal program and general plan. Goals around infill development, sustainability, and housing diversity. It's a quick and achievable way to add a much-needed unit of housing without new infrastructure, grading, or subdivision. And it supports statewide efforts to encourage ADUs as part of California's affordable housing solution, efforts that are increasingly expected to exempt ADUs from growth caps like Measure D. Furthermore, denying this allocation or holding it for a project that cannot proceed with a second allocation risks delaying meaningful housing progress. It would also set a precedent on underutilizing the limited allocations available each year, even when qualified and shovel-ready projects are waiting. We urge you to make the most of this allocation and help us build a small unit for our family. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Is there anyone else present who wishes to comment on this agenda item? Sir?
Hi.
Hi.
My name is Govan. I'm the owner of 775 Lot. That's just above his lot. And I requested for two allocations, and only one is available. So there are two options that's given. One is allocate the remaining one for me. And then in September, see if you can transfer the allocation. That is what I would prefer. And in the option of two, I don't see a recommendation of any transfer to my project in case, since I scored higher than the people below me. So that is one thing I want to say. And... So that is one thing I want to say. And the next thing is, like, I'm renting. I don't own a property, and this is my first property that I would like to build. And this is also impactful to my family. I don't have a family, but I have a dog. And, yeah, I want to say, like, I also want to have the opportunity and liberty that others had when they were my age. This just pushes construction of my house to, like, another year, and it's still uncertain if I'll get it or not. Because right now, everyone wants to build ADU, and currently, ADU is considered as a population growth measure, right? So, and also, we know that there is housing shortage, right? And when it comes to housing shortage, it's basically supply and demand, and we don't have much supply. And I would argue that constructing two units, extra two units a year, would be more efficient than just one unit. So if you want to build three units, it's going to take longer time than just constructing two units. So that is what I wanted to say. And also, I was asked if I would forfeit my allocation for this year. So that was just a yes or no question from the committee. I know questions are not simple as yes or no. So I don't know the context or what it is. So if you'd like to ask any further questions, I can answer.
We appreciate all your comments. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any other comments on this agenda item? Any online, Bridgette?
I am seeing none online.
I'll close this part of the public hearing. And I have to admit that not having experience with how the Planning Commission might adjudicate or mediate a disagreement between staff and applicant, so I'm open to suggestions.
I don't think I've ever had a situation in the 10 years I've been involved with this where we've had to resolve that. And, yeah. And we haven't had a situation in my recollection where we've had a property that could potentially, you know, get one allocation but not be able to proceed from a permitting perspective. So these are new phenomena to me. Yeah.
Chair Reddick, as soon as you were about to close, someone raised their hand, so I didn't know if you'd like to acknowledge that.
Yeah, I guess we should err on the side of completing this and reopen the public hearing then.
Okay, Julie, you can go. Oops. You can unmute and speak. Julie McHenry.
Yes, I just wanted to say that last year, we went through the process, and we missed getting an allocation by a half point. So we have been, we've been through this. And as it was said, it is messy. But I just want to caution the Planning Commission from reopening the scoring at this point would be really unfair to all of us that have gone through the process this year. And I just want to caution the Planning Commission from going down that route. It would not be, it would be not right for all of us who have gone through what we've gone through this year. Thank you.
Thank you.
You know, I, sorry, Commissioner Gossett?
Well, I would like to ask a clarifying question.
Should we close public call?
Yeah, that's all. I have no further...
Public hearing closed again.
I wanted to know, I was going to ask this anyway, and then when I heard the public speak, I thought, well, maybe we could talk about this. I was going to ask if phasing is being used for 940 Main Street.
940 Main Street does not currently have a phasing agreement in place, so they are limited to a maximum of five allocations during this initial period, and that's what they've applied for.
Okay. And so then what I would like to propose, to talk about with my fellow commissioners, without impacting anyone who has already received allocations above the line, given that this project isn't ready, we know it's not ready. And could they be eligible, could we switch Pine with 940 Main Street to allow Pine to move forward and then use September transfer for 940 Main Street? Because that would be, I guess that would be, yeah, that's my question. Is that doable? I mean, I think we do, as a commission, have the discretion to make that determination and to change a determination. I'm a little concerned about making determinations. So I wanted to throw that out there for you because it wouldn't be denying 940 Main, their allocations. We would just be delaying it. So that's just something I wanted to throw out there.
Isn't it four allocations?
Yes. So we could leave one with 940 and transfer four of those five to possibly, to bring them above the line. Not that they would, they would, I don't know how you make this work, but the fact of the matter is 940 doesn't need the five allocations this year. We don't know when that project's going to come forward or if it will even come forward. There's also a risk, and I don't want to get into deliberation, I'm just throwing this question out, because the risk is something I want to talk about during deliberation of 940.
Through the chair. While I don't know if it's, if we can or cannot, I think that would require additional review and probably checking in with the applicant of 940 Main Street as well. As far as tonight goes, 940 Main Street did score where they scored, so we do have to look at it in terms of the scoring, but it could be an option to discuss with the applicant potentially, but I just don't know the, I would have to defer to see if that's allowable or not.
Yeah, I'm not 100% certain we need to talk to the applicant. I think the commission does have a bit of discretion in this matter if they're willing to take that.
May I ask questions through the chair?
Please.
Staff? If they're not ready to build, what was the point of going through the process?
And my apologies, I don't have a light on this one, so if I keep messing up, that's why. For 940 Main Street, currently, our understanding is the applicant is applying annually for as many as they can get in order to accumulate enough to be able to move forward with their project. Until the phasing agreement is in place, they're limited to five allocations during the initial period each year. So they received five allocations last year. This would be another five allocations, and so on is the intent.
So how many do they have in their bank now? Do you know?
Currently, they only have five approved.
Thank you.
So through the chair? I have a clarifying question that's related. Can you tell me about the September transfer?
Come September, if there's remaining base allocations for the downtown area, which currently there are 21 remaining base allocations, then at the city council's discretion, they can choose to allow for either all or some of those remaining base allocations to be transferred to the outside of downtown area. And the criteria could be more varied than just the scoring. The scoring could still be used and implemented, but in years past, 2021 was when the last time transfers happened, and the criteria was based upon affordability, so ADUs being prioritized for transfers and then proximity to the town center. But there's a variety of options that could be recommended to the city council to consider as far as transfers go, but it would still be at their discretion and dependent on those remaining allocations.
So all of the three sites that are, two in the yellow and then the pine right below it, those are, those are all ADUs, and they're all sort of close to the town center, and so is 940, whatever. So aren't all of those projects going to get a Measure D in September?
I think there is a case for all of them to be recommended for transfers. That is, staff had a similar understanding of a recommendation could be based on those being so close to the cutoff or the fact that duplexes are also considered with ADUs are a means of affordable units in comparison to single families. That was similar to how that was applied in 2021. And so there is certainly grounds for all of those to be recommended. It's just dependent on if it were to be approved by the city council.
Sorry, I just wanted, go ahead.
So just to be clear, the 940 Main Street, which is two blocks away from the 460 Poplar, which is two blocks away from the Third Avenue one, those, the 941 is affordable housing, right? So it seems kind of like a slam dunk that that would be, get a transfer from, in September, and wouldn't need any, they're not ready to build right now anyway, so they could be, they're going to get a transfer in September. I don't understand why they have to get their five now. I mean, I do also, just in terms of the math, the two in yellow each need one, and then the pine needs four. So you'd only, you'd only be able to give three to the pine, but I bet they'd like that.
If I may clarify on that, with the transfers, there could be up, currently, there could be up to 21 allocations available. Just wanted to make sure that was clear, so.
Also, just to be clear, so most of the people not receiving allocations could actually get an allocation through the September transfer.
If those allocations remain available and the city council moves forward with transfers in September, then, yeah, I believe all but two or three of the remaining allocations could receive a transfer.
If I could follow up on that question, if a new applicant comes forward and submits a Measure D application in 2025 in the downtown area, would they be eligible for this transfer? Or would they supersede any transfers?
Anyone applying in the outside of downtown area would have to, if they have not applied in January, would have to wait until January 2026.
But prior to September, if a new applicant comes forward and says, hey, I want to build 50 units of housing in the downtown area, would they take priority over any transfers under city law?
Yeah, any applicants in the downtown area would receive the allocations that they're applying for.
I'm looking at the Measure D map that's in the LCLUP and having a hard time reading it because it's pretty blurry. Is that the map that we're using from the original ballot measure map? That's what we're using for this allocation process?
Correct.
Okay. And remind me again why 940 Main Street, which is in downtown, is, like, why is that not just part of the downtown project?
Yeah, based on the Measure D downtown is based on the redevelopment survey from, not recalling what year, but a long time ago. And 940 Main Street actually borders the outs, the edges of the downtown area on two sides, but is just outside of it. Even, you'll see an applicant, we have applicants even closer to what would be Main Street, and they're also outside of downtown. Yeah.
Okay. It's not an oversight. It's not a mistake. It's just we're using the redevelopment map from the original ballot measure that was passed in 1999.
Yes, there was talk last year about city council putting a referendum on the ballot to change the map, if not the, all the other legalities of Measure D, but that did not, that has not happened. I have a clarifying question, and maybe I'm, maybe I'm naive, but I've been under the impression that the way Measure D, the laws incorporated in Measure D and the city council's interpretation of it do not allow us or the city council to do something like decide that 940 Main Street does not need its allocations this year and to re-award it to somebody else. But if, maybe the, either staff or our attorney could tell me if I'm right about that, I'd appreciate it.
This certainly is a new proposal and not something that's come up before, and we're currently reviewing the code here, you know, to work through that question. I don't see a clear provision that would authorize that sort of delay of an allocation, but it's something that I'm continuing to review.
But, so they would, so we would need the applicant to agree to it? Is that the idea? Is that what you're saying? Or are you saying that we just can't do?
No, I'm saying that I'm still, that I'm reviewing the code to see if there's some sort of, if there's a provision that would allow for the Planning Commission to make a determination.
So you're saying we don't have, you might not have the discretion, but you don't know? Is that it?
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you.
Are there more clarifying questions? Commissioner Rims?
Mr. Chairman, I'm just wondering if the allocation number is a hard fixed number or there is some flexibility in there, either through the commission or the council? Because we have a situation here, which we have apparently two applicants right on the cusp. And to knock out one because you can only get one unit of the two, and to go to the next level, it just seems to me that that's a hybrid situation that needs to be looked at and maybe addressed somehow. And I don't know what the answer is or how to address it at this point.
We could invite our attorney to comment on that, but I believe the answer is that that was the will of the voters passed in a landslide way back when. It did occur to me today, thinking about this, that the 1% population growth leads to a number of new residences based on some assumption about number of people in the residences. I don't think I've ever seen that written down, what that is.
There, if you go into the December staff report for the city council, when they ask them to approve the allocations, I think the math is provided there. And it is based, every year, they change it based on census data, and they have a factor that they apply to the data. And I won't explain the math right now, but it is in a city staff report.
I recall that now that you mentioned. I remember seeing part of that city council meeting.
So through the chair, not to make it more confusing, but, but so if we tried to include Pine in some way, they're actually tied with the person right below them on Metzger. So we're really talking about six, you know, like, which one do you give it to? I don't know about that. But what the 940 Main Street would solve is that you could delay two of those of their, of their allocations to the September transfer. Because any low-income housing that has, is on two sides of the edge of downtown is going to get there. edge of downtown, um, is going to get their, uh, September, um, transfer. I mean, it is. Like we all, I mean, it will. There's, there's no way it could not. So.
Not necessarily. There's an application for a, a project with, um, mid pen that could have 50 units of housing in the downtown.
That is 940. That is 940.
That's 940 Main Street?
Yeah, that's 940.
That's 940.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I mean, that's who's taking the five allocations and, and, and sort of, um, taking two of those. Uh, we could, we could, you don't have to take all five. You could say that we're delaying two of them until September transfer because they don't need them until whenever they're gonna, they're gonna build that thing. Like assuming they get the funding, assuming it gets approved, assuming things happen. I mean, that could be, it could be many years. So they just want the Measure D. They want it in hand. And I'm, you know, we know that the council will give it to them in September. We could direct the council to give it to them in September.
So, so I think that, um, I'm always concerned when we start going down a path where we're doing something that's unprecedented. Um, and I want to make sure that we have a legal footing to do it. Um, I think the first obligation we have is one of oversight and making sure a process has been followed clearly and we understand the scoring. Um, I asked questions specific to 775 and 460 prior to the meeting, uh, if the applicants had contested the scoring. And, um, the answer I got back was no. I've heard from an applicant that they didn't understand that that was an option to contest the scoring. Um, I've also heard, um, uh, a second applicant that I did not ask that specific question about raise this issue on 460 Pine about why was my project scored zero. Um, and, uh, it's just before we start talking about switching things around or pulling 940 Main Street, I think it's important to make sure from an oversight perspective that we understand what happened. A serious issue has been raised about 940 or 490 Pine, and I want to make sure we understand the details of it because that is concerning. Now, when the Measure D was submitted, does everything have to be present when you do the submission? There's a process people are supposed to follow. I just want to make sure that we understand, okay, do you have to have all of your documents perfect? Are you allowed any additional supporting documents? Are you allowed any other additional narrative? I went through the Measure A process and I know you had to have that buttoned down. Um, and it's very similar. So I just, I just want to make sure from an oversight perspective, we focus on, like, look at these three properties and we make sure we understand. I asked the specific question of, uh, Ocoee to go through the scoring so we could understand why two nearly identical properties, uh, from my perspective have different scores for walkability and bicycling when there's 12 points available. Like, I'd like to make sure we do that before we start talking about other things if we could.
But I guess sta, so staff did answer the 490 Pine question.
I just want to say whenever you guys are ready, Marlene has an answer for your legal question too.
Okay.
I, I didn't actually hear the answer. I thought we kind of jumped forward and I did not feel like we had a complete answer to the 490 Pine question.
Through the, through the chair.
Please.
Uh, I, I was gonna speak quickly to the scoring question, um, but I can also, I don't know if you want to hear from, um, I'll speak to the scoring question. Um, I will try to share on the screen here. Uh, the way staff evaluates each of the, uh, walkability scores is, uh, my apologies, seeing this pull up, is a buffer map is created for each applicant.
There we go.
A buffer map is created for each applicant. So here I've pulled up the buffer map for 775 Third and, uh, 460 Poplar. Uh, Poplar is gonna be in the yellow, uh, and 775 Third is in the blue and.
Poplar is in the middle.
So the green is the overlap of the two properties. Um, so this yellow rim here, maybe it's kind of greenish on the screen, but.
Poplar is in the middle.
Sorry. This, this is a, a buffer for a half mile radius. So, um, it's not illuminating exactly where Poplar is. It should be this one right here, I believe. And so this yellow buffer is a, a point five mile radius around it. Uh, and then 775 Third has this blue buffer that's a point, a point five mile radius around it. And, um, this kind of green colored area is where the two colors are overlapping. Um.
That's very, that's very hard to see.
My apologies. I had to make it on the fly in terms of coloring. Um, we look at them individually and not typically overlapping. Um, but here, uh, if I zoom in, uh, the one difference in scoring is actually based on a grocery store. That is the one point difference between these two properties. Uh, and you will see, uh, that Cunha, well, my apologies, which is on the corner of Kelly and Main is within, uh, the buffer for 775 Third, but not for 460 Poplar. So that's where that one point difference is coming from.
And is that based on there's any grocery stores? So if there were five grocery stores or one grocery store, you'd get the same number of point allocation?
Correct.
Isn't there a grocery store right next to Spice Me Thai? I believe.
There is. Yes.
Yes, there is.
Staff is, in previous years since the scoring criteria has been applied, um, only considered Cunha, Safeway and New Leaf to be considered, uh, grocery stores for the walkability criteria.
But they're not.
Sorry. Is there a, is there a basis for that definition?
This is one of the areas where it's based on interpretation that's been applied over the years.
Was that detail communicated to all of the applicants in writing in advance?
No, I would say no.
Okay. So there's, to your knowledge, there's no standard in terms of size or, uh, amount of food. It's just a quote unquote grocery store is the definition.
Uh, we can double check exactly what the code says, um, but off the top of my head, we go off of, um, there was, uh, at one point an established list, um, for all these different walkability items, uh, over the years where there has been a question that's been reviewed and it's been updated. Um, that's been pretty minimal in terms of where there's been updates. Um, but.
Could you bring the map back up?
Yeah.
The code just says grocery store.
Is there a way to, um, increase the, like, just somehow maximize the space and reduce all the buffer on your screen?
Is that helpful at all? I'm not sure.
I'm sorry, but they both look like they're within the blue area. Like that circle includes both of those houses.
Well, I think the, the, um, I'm not, I mean, I see that, I was playing with this type of software a couple of weeks ago. So the, the blue circle, like the outer ring, that, there you go.
So here's 775 Third.
I see them. They're, they're two blocks away from each other.
Yeah. And if I turn this off, you'll, I can turn on 460 Poplar. And so now you see more distinguished buffer.
I mean, I see that they're different circles and they cover different areas.
Yeah.
That's clear. Um, but there's clearly a grocery store in, um, and I've been there. Um, so like, um, there's clearly a grocery store there. I mean, it's, and it's, it's not a, just selling sodas. They sell a diverse variety of foods from all across Latin America.
Are you talking about the Spice Me?
Next door to Spice Me, yeah.
Yes. Yeah. That's a grocery store. Yes.
So, so the first point of order, I think, from an oversight perspective is that, um, that grocery store should be considered as a grocery store. And I think that may impact other, um, other applicants in the process. Um, so that's just one point of observation. Um, and I don't know how that'll affect other scoring. Um, yeah. And, and on the landscaping question, which is another question I submitted in advance, um, is it, I mean, I'm, hello neighbor, I live down the street from you and, and we had a brown, or a, a, a discussion earlier around, can we all participate in this meeting? And even though you live within 500 meters, 500 yards of me, we can't, I can't participate. Um, the, what's the difference between the 32 and the 29? I'd just like to understand how that worked. And it probably has something to do with native species, I imagine.
For, um, the landscaping question, section six, uh, on the summary sheet, uh, the difference there is 460 Poplar selected to do a less than 350 gallon rain barrel, which gives them two points. Uh, 775 Third Ave chose to do a greater than 350 gallon rain barrel, which gives them five points. So it's a three-point difference.
Okay. Thank you.
So not to belabor the grocery thing, but just so you, it is, it is about, it's only about a block and a half difference from Cunha's. So I don't know if it actually would, would change your equation or not, but it's a placida market.
But I mean, it's not in the circle, right? So Cunha's wouldn't count, but if we.
Well, but it was like a distance from Cunha's is what it was, is what they were saying. Anyway.
But I think it's.
It's only one block.
There's also definitely some questions then for me about medical practices, school, preschool. Cause like, I, I stopped on you this, so far, but, and for those reported, I'm, I just can't imagine that either of the corporations would be.
So if, if I may, through the chair, uh, both applicants scored points for everything in terms of the walkability question. You get one point per, there's 12 criteria. If you meet one spot, you get one point for that criteria. So even if you reach five restaurants, you get one point. Um, each applicant scored everything the same except for the grocery store. Uh, and neither of them got the post office or laundry as well.
Is the, uh, Main Street medical facility, has that been factored into the calculation this year?
The urgent care?
It, it would have been. Most applicants reach, um, a variety of other medical considered ones. So it's typically not as much of a point of contention since there is so much that meets that definition.
Marlene, I think you've been waiting to share your findings.
Yes. So this is a point that there was a suggestion, um, that came up earlier, an idea to, um, potentially delay the, or to not allocate, I believe, two points to, and could you, was it 940?
940 Main.
The 940 Main.
Yep.
Project. Um, and I think to recommend that those be, that the city council, um, approve a transfer of units or a transfer of allocations that would go to that project in the fall. Of course, that's subject to, is a city council approval. And so I was looking through the code to see, uh, you know, to find support for that type of approach, kind of equitable distribution of units. And I found a few relevant sections of the code. So in section 1706, 120 subsection D, there is a provision that says, and, and this speaks to the community development director, but I think the same principle could apply to the planning commission. So it says, "In the event that there is more than one applicant seeking multiple allocations during the initial period, this being the, the initial period of the year, the community development director shall distribute the available allocations equitably to the applicants, except as otherwise may be provided for in this chapter." So that contemplates the possibility of multiple projects seeking multiple applications and some, um, some form of equitable, um, distribution at the director's discretion. Um, and then, uh, going to the planning commission, there is a section of the code 1706, 275 C. Um, and the, the overall section is review of points awarded and residential dwelling units allocated. Um, and so subsection C says, "The planning commission may ratify or modify the final determination of points and residential dwelling unit allocations at the public meeting where they're considering allocations." And so I think reading these two sections of the code together, that allows the community development director to, um, propose a, an equitable distribution of units among projects from their, you know, multiple projects, um, competing for units and the ability for the planning commission to modify a recommendation of staff, um, that that could allow for, um, a decision to, um, to hold off on approving those two allocations for that project.
Thank you.
I think I just heard that there's a legal justification for us to potentially pull two allocations from 940 Main Street and award them to 14 and 15 on this spreadsheet.
That's what it sounds like.
Okay. I just wanted to say that out loud for everybody on the commission. Um, I still would like to, um, consider the grocery store issue and I don't know if it can be done tonight. Uh, I think that's something we should take a look at. Um, on the 490 Pine, um, I've heard, um, the applicant has contested the decision and I would just like to dig into that a little bit and get staff's input on what happened and why, um, a quote unquote misunderstanding from the applicant's perspective, uh, wasn't considered and why they got zero points. Um, because, uh, again, oversight capacity, like just looking at this from an oversight perspective, I just want to understand what happened.
Yeah, that, yeah, that's, that's fair. I think we, we, we all want that. I, I think I heard Director Lacko say that the 490 Pine applicants had submitted incomplete plans, but I, we'd like to know the, the full story there.
Yeah, I'm happy to speak to that. Um, so in this circumstance, uh, the question, the criteria that we're looking at is, um, the question reads, "All home front entrances must be street facing or, or seen from the street." I can pull up the application just to be sure we're accurate in this. So it's 4B, uh, "All home front entrances can be seen from the street and slash or from other front doors." Um, this was a bit of a unique situation where, um, this is the only duplex that was applied for. Um, the interpretation was, it does say "all home front entrances." Um, being that a duplex would have two front entrances and both of those would need to be visible from, um, the street or, uh, there's further clarification here that multifamily development could have a shared front entrance. Um, this was looked at across all of the applications. Um, every single, single family application, uh, you could, the, the entry was clearly indicated and indicated being street facing. Uh, 940 Main Street did not provide that criteria. They were not awarded the points on that. Um, their plans did not clearly indicate where their home front entrances would face. So that was, um, looked at across both of those equally. Um, and then in this case, uh, the applicant's plans indicate, like they said, that front door, and I'm happy to pull up the plans as well. Um, but being that. But being that it is a two-story duplex, did not indicate the front entrance of the second unit, so this was unclear for staff to be able to award the points for. The only indication staff had on these plans is this rear staircase, which was anticipated that that would lead to the entrance to the second-story duplex. While the applicant did share that they would intend to provide a front entrance via a wraparound deck in our conversation, because of the competitive nature of Measure D, we don't allow for revisions beyond that initial submittal period. And in this case, in looking at the title, or the, yeah, the title page of the application, which Director Laco read earlier, it indicates that project plan should demonstrate how the project conforms to the allocation scoring criteria and will be used by city staff to support the scoring process. And in this case, we didn't feel like there was enough indication of that on that project.
Can I just dig into that just a little bit, so I understand? So there's a deadline that is, at some point, you can submit prior to the deadline. Prior to the deadline, do city staff look at the applications and provide feedback on projects?
Staff is open and happy to meet with any applicant that wants to come in and go over the plans. We did have several applicants do that to verify that they were meeting everything that they asked for on the checklist. So that is always an option.
Prior to the deadline?
Prior to the deadline. However, in circumstances where the applicant has just submitted their application, in that case, we're typically just checking for a complete application, meaning they've included a site plan, but we are not checking the site plan for every piece of criteria and cross-checking it with the checklist, and then the other submittal criteria required.
And did the applicant avail themselves of city staff's time prior to the deadline?
I don't recall going over this specifically. I don't know if the, if the applicant did or not. I sincerely don't recall during that time. We go through a lot of different meetings, so it's hard to say.
And what was the deadline?
The deadline for the Measure D submittal this year, it was January 30th.
So I guess that's a question I'd like to just understand is, I mean, did the applicant, I mean, if you're going to open it up to the applicant, I mean, if we have evidence that demonstrates that that happened, that would be something worthy of consideration. But what I've heard so far doesn't incline me to believe that we should reconsider 490 Pine based on this completeness of application, because that does create a Pandora's box.
Yeah. Well, it's a little irregular, but in the interest of getting this right, I think we, we should reopen the public hearing and, and let the 490 Pine applicants know that...
Mr. Chairman, just a quick question, if you don't mind. Through the chair for staff, when does the application period open? We know it closes on January 30, but when does it open?
It's open January 1st through January 31st typically, this year is the 30th. But staff encourages any applicant that inquires about Measure D to start coming in to go through submittals around late November. And we do have some applicants take us up on that.
Thank you.
Want to be sure we give you a chance to, to tell your side of the story.
Appreciate that. So yes, I did go in and sit down with the city staff to review not only this project, but the other project that I also submitted on Cabrillo Highway. And we sat there at the desk and went through each of the items on the submittal list and did a review of both projects. And another thing to note is that this is a complete submittal. I submitted everything that was asked for on this submittal application. They do not require a full set of plans. They do not require a second story for the floor plan. If there was any question as to where the front door was, my father and I are in the city probably once a week. I know Coe and Scott very well. They could have easily asked us. I understand that's not their protocol. However, we are always available for communication. Thank you.
Just, just to follow up, did you complete that process prior to January 30th where you sat down and said, "Did I get every point I could possibly get on this project?"
Yeah, it was approximately, I'd say, 10 to 15 days prior to the submittal deadline.
And do you have like a, like a calendar invite, or has he just showed up and had an informal conversation?
Just showed up, sir.
Okay, and who did you speak with?
I spoke with Scott.
Okay.
Do you mind if I ask a question?
Yeah.
Please.
Did you have a site plan with you when you showed up?
With the check and everything that is required, the deed to the property, the full package for both projects.
Thank you again. I'm going to recommend that we take a five-minute break to allow, well, people who need a break to take a break and staff to be certain they're organized with all our requests.
I'm assuming unless we want to push our training off.
We're going to wrap up by 11, aren't we? Okay, 11:30. Second?
All those in favor? Aye.
Yes.
All right, so I think we gave staff a chance to regroup. Coe, do you want, do you want to speak at this point, or?
I, I can provide a bit of clarification. The meeting that the applicant referred to, that isn't typically the meeting where we sit down with applicants and we go through their application point by point. That was a more of a submittal checklist, where we're just verifying, has the applicant provided a site plan? Has the applicant provided the grant deed? And have they provided a completed checklist? But we're not necessarily checking every single item in that case. We typically offer that in a more formal setting because it does take a while. And so we have had some applicants take that opportunity. We understand maybe that needs to be made clearer in the future, that those are going to have separate outcomes in terms of the feedback staff is going to provide. But staff's understanding of that meeting may have differed from the applicant's. And I think that may have been a miscommunication.
Is there something that's written down that says this is an option that's available? Is it in the application process? Is it, you know, or is it just an oral thing?
Our application provides a recommendation to schedule a planning staff consultation. The language says that applicants are encouraged to schedule time to meet with a Half Moon Bay planner at least two weeks in advance of the application deadline. Planning staff will be available to review draft applications and provide non-binding guidance intended to assist the applicants with this process.
And then you, I think I heard the applicant say they did an ad hoc meeting, they just kind of dropped in to review the checklist.
It was a counter check-in and submittal.
And I don't like, want to adjudicate everything. It's just, things are, we're a small town, sometimes the planning processes aren't clean, but you, your expectation is, hey, there's this thing, maybe it could be more clear, is what I think I heard.
I think staff would be open to trying to provide that additional clarification for future years.
Okay, thanks.
Well, and just to raise it again, there is the September transfer, right? So I have a quick question about, about the September transfer. So the number of requested allocations on here is 47, is that right?
Correct.
But I added them up and they're 46. Is it 46 or 47?
Yeah, I maybe provided you with the previous, there was...
So it used to be 46?
No, my apologies. There was a public comment that came in that did catch an error in the summary. It was under, I believe, it should be MDA 2025-027. It's a line, a row, 24.
Okay.
That should be a single-family dwelling unit and ADU for two units. My apologies if I printed the last one in error instead of the revised.
So it is 47?
It is 47. And that error was double-checked. It didn't, it was calculated correctly everywhere else, just not in Exhibit A.
And then this 1049 Railroad Avenue got approved, but it submitted twice. And we, I get that. That's the old, the one that's down here, number 28, is like the old submission, right? So they got approved.
1049 Railroad submitted two separate applications this year. They paid fees separately, and they are scored independently of each other. So they scored based on different criteria. One of them, they elected to do below-market-rate housing, which ultimately scored them higher.
So, but they're both the same project. It's not like, okay, they want to build whatever, three units up here and add two more later on.
Yes.
It's more like, it's just one. So, so this one down here, the 1049 Railroad Avenue, which is two, actually, you could just delete them. So, so really, it's 45 is what we're talking about, and 22 available. Is that accurate?
That's right.
Yes.
So, so that, so it's 45. So there's 20, so there's 23 units that were not awarded and were requested, right?
Yeah, if you take 1049 Railroad out of the equation in terms of calculating that, you'd have 23.
And how many September transfers are there?
Currently, 21.
21. So, so pretty much almost everything on this list, if council wanted to do that. Is that right?
And given they remain available, we, we do typically have one to two applicants that might come in and be downtown.
Sure. Okay, thanks.
Can I follow up on that through the chair? So would every single project qualify? Because I, I do remember there were, I won't call up the property, but there's a property that had asked for a variance in the past. And I always understood that if you were asking for a variance, the project might not qualify for a September transfer.
From my understanding, that wouldn't disqualify them from a September transfer. In previous years, we have had applicants elect for a variance. Typically, what happens there is they just end up scoring lower. They're losing out on five points there, and that ends up disqualifying them from this. The last time transfers were done, it wasn't so much as a qualifying or not qualifying. I believe it was looked at more of a tiered criteria. So every ADU was first awarded, all the transfers. And then they looked at how many were remaining available. Sorry, I actually had a slide for this, but it's not pulled up anymore. But, so in this case, you would have eight to nine ADUs, and then you could look at whichever applicant's not getting, in the yellow right now, they could, you could recommend that they receive it, you could recommend that 490 receive it based on some criteria. So there's, you can really, it can be shaped more independently, or you could just go by the scoring if, or city council could go by the scoring if they elected.
Thank you.
So, so just to be clear, all, pretty much everything that's in the blue is an ADU. And they're all actually pretty close in score until you get down to like 104, 103. Like all 107 to 112. They're all really close. So, so city council could, assuming that no other project were coming before them from downtown area, could say that this is part of the September transfer, right? Pretty much the whole sheet, minus like the bottom four.
Yes, city council could elect to do that.
And you're saying we could direct them to do it, or suggest that they do it, or?
It's, yeah, it's more of just a recommendation or a consideration, since it's ultimately...
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. That would solve a lot of things.
And of course, it's dependent on what's available come September 1.
Correct.
Because it doesn't, it just, it doesn't look as heartbreaking and heart-wrenching and gut-wrenching and all that, if almost everyone gets approved. So, there you go.
I don't think it's mine. So what happens with the grocery, if we make a finding that the grocery store on Church, I think it is, is a grocery store, and all bodegas in Half Moon Bay, there's at least one other in town, are grocery stores, how does that affect the scoring?
I wouldn't know off the top of my head. Staff has made notes throughout our ranking system as to what walkability criteria each applicant has qualified for, so, but I believe you would need to direct staff to go re-score the scoring with that additional interpretation.
Because, I mean, it could affect other properties. I mean, there's several different properties that, I have a little mapping tool, but I'm not going to go through it during our meeting. And what's the distance they need to be from a grocery store?
Well, .5 miles.
I feel like that's a rational step to take. I worry a little bit that if there, how many other grocery store issues are there that are out there in the scoring? I mean, we haven't comprehensively examined the scoring, but it seems likely that if that one was caught in a relatively brief scrutiny here tonight, there may be other issues that give one pause. But it's late in the game to be questioning the, the scoring criteria.
And given that this, through the chair, I'm sorry. Given that...
Go ahead.
That this entire ranking is based on a consistent grocery store, you know, I, I don't think we should change it tonight. I think next year, like, you know, we should include bodegas or, you know, little, you know, that is a nice little grocery store that serves the community. So I don't disagree that we shouldn't, but this is standardized, you know, based on Cunha being, you know, qualified, Safeway, the other grocery store, A New Leaf. So I think we should keep it, let's not mess around with changing any of that ranking criteria here tonight. I wouldn't be comfortable doing that.
I, I think it's fair to follow precedent, but I do think we should make a recommendation as to what's a grocery store and not a convenience store. There is a definition. I have, I have some info I can shoot over to staff. I'm sure they can come up with the definition. But the gas station does not qualify. You have to actually sell lettuce or some kind of produce. I mean, but there's definition that, that you can use. I think it would be helpful. So I'm, I'm in agreement with your, your position, Commissioner Gossip.
By the way, it's .9 miles.
Point what?
.9. Less than a mile.
What is, last year?
Oh, sorry. The, the 460 Poplar and 500 Person, the grocery store, the placida market.
Oh, okay, okay.
Anyway, so it's, it's just a block away from, from Cunha's.
So getting back to, again, unfortunately, for the 490 Pine project, I, I understand I, I understand that the process can be murky. And city staff have agreed that they could do things to make things more clear and that property owners can understand what their rights are more clearly. And then maybe we can, I know, I've had conversations with Director Lacko about some of the things the city's already working on, so I'm sure some of that's already in the works. But again, I'm loathe to change the process because there was a determination that the plans were complete, but they didn't qualify for all the items in the checklist. I think, I think, again, following the precedent we've had before. I would make a recommendation that, you know, for that particular project, because it is workforce housing, that it be prioritized for the transfer in its current prioritized list. Like, it's currently the number one project on the list. And it is something that I think we should, I would make a, I would feel very comfortable making a recommendation to city council on that particular property. I think there was a question that was raised about, do we take the discretion that we believe we have, because ultimately, this is going to go to city council, and pull two of the allocations from the 940 Main Street with the expectation that if they applied for five, city council's probably going to do that as a transfer and make a recommendation that city council allocate to that. I didn't think coming into this that I'd be comfortable with that, but I'm actually amenable to moving forward with the allocations, the second allocation for 775 and 460, and pulling two of the allocations out of a sense of equitable distribution and our authority as an oversight body to make sure that we're applying equitable distribution.
There's-
I'm sorry.
Through the chair. The other reason that I like, the reason I like that idea is that then we are not making the determination on those two, because there's a big difference in making a determination, changing a determination or not making the determination. So, because I don't think we should determine that the rankings themselves. I think that's a city staff issue that they should come up with, and then we decide whether or not to accept it or not. But we do have the discretion, I think, to, you know, as I already stated earlier, reallocate the 940 Main, and we know they'll get a September transfer just because of the nature of the project.
I think we should make a recommendation.
Exactly, I agree with that, yes. And I have one more question about phasing. Why haven't they come forward with a phasing plan?
940 Main Street applied for a phasing agreement during 2024, early 2024, but they haven't gotten an approved phasing agreement. So there's, it's still in the works. So until it's approved, it cannot be implemented for Measure D.
Who approves it? Is that city council?
City council.
Okay.
So, through the chair?
Mm-hmm.
So I would definitely be in favor of both of these. Commissioner Hernandez talked about making a recommendation on, on 490 Pine as well. But, but can we also recommend that the city council, given that so many of the ones in blue here are ADUs, that we recommend that they approve, consider approving as many of them as possible? I think, I think that's a fair question in September.
Yes, I'd, I'd be in favor of making that recommendation. I don't, I don't think it would overstep our role.
The benefit also is that this will help us with our RINA numbers, because we have listed ADUs as part of our, you know, units that will be applied towards the RINA in our housing element.
Through the chair. If I may, I was able to get the slide I was referring to earlier that can help show you some of the potential options or how you could structure an option in terms of the recommendation for a transfer. Not sure if it's very helpful at this point, but wanted to point out that you could, there's a variety of ways you could structure that, and include multiple aspects to it.
Yes, well, as Vice Chair Gorn has pointed out, if, unless we see a lot of activity with downtown applications between now and September 1, there's liable to be enough transfers to service most of these, these ones below the line. So, so several of these criteria, such as people who've been deferred previously and most affordable, could definitely be served.
So-
So we need to structure a motion with all these good ideas.
Well, hang on, Mr. Chairman.
Oh, sorry, Commissioner Reams.
I've been patiently listening to all of this because I just don't have the background or experience in this. So I'm still on a very steep learning curve here with all of this Measure D stuff. But my experience tells me that if we start reallocating and changing things from what has been put before us, we probably will be going, or at least from my opinion, we probably go down a slippery slope that in the future, others may look to, well, you did it then, and why can't we do it now? I think that's a decision for the council. I think that if we approve what's before us in the yellow, that's, you know, we could approve the first one in the yellow. And if they decline afterwards, because they only have an ADU permit, but they can't do anything without the single-family unit going with it, they may just say, well, I'll back off, or I'll wait, or do something, and they may forfeit their position to the next one in line. I think it's nice that you can take someone else's allocations that's way up on the list and just, we just declare that we're going to take so many units from there and then reallocate them somewhere else. But I think that's the slippery slope that I don't want to go down. So I can't support doing that. I will support just adopting what the staff has presented to us and presenting it before the council and saying, have at it. Or let's look at something in the future to either modify or revisit Measure D, because the little that I've seen so far, I don't like it. It's a mess, and it needs to be looked at, I mean, very seriously. And just tonight, you could see it's quarter to 11:00, and we're still not done. We could still be here for an hour easily, I think. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my position. And I know I'm probably outnumbered here, but it's one of those things that I just call it the way I see it. So, thank you for the time.
No, I appreciate your viewpoint. I, I wouldn't personally consider for a moment directing the reallocation from somebody like 940 Main, way, way up high in the scoring, if, if there wasn't a virtual certainty of that not impacting their project because of transfers.
Well, and they're not building. I mean, their, their project is, is far in the future. So whether they get it now or September, it doesn't matter.
I mean-
So-
Well, I can, I can appreciate that.
Right, I understand what you're saying.
I don't have the not, the knowledge or the background or the experience.
No, I know, I get it.
So, so I'm coming from a different perspective.
I get it, I heard, I heard.
And a bird in the hand here is better than wishful thinking out in the future.
Right.
So that's the way I'm looking at it. So that's, that's my position.
Yep. So-
I'm sorry. Two other, so I really appreciate your perspective and coming in, and, and I think there's a very sound logic to that. And I'm a little bit torn on this. However, I do, I think, listening to my fellow commissioners and listening to some of the circumstances, I'm a little amenable, a little more amenable to it at this point in time. But I really do appreciate how you got to your decision, and I have a tremendous respect for it. I am, the other thing that I just want to mention, there's two things. We can make other recommendations. I'm not sure I want to make other recommendations to city council. We could talk about proximity to town center, all these types of things. I think we have scoring criteria. I'm comfortable sticking with the ones we have and making a more affirmative statement for 490 Pine. I do think it's likely that a phasing agreement is going to come before city council for 940 Main, which is on Metzger, but I can't get my head around that. Yeah. The other thing, though, I will just call out is, we wouldn't be here until 11 o'clock at night if we weren't counting ADUs as a full allocation. And so I would really strongly recommend that we ask city council to consider reforming the, you know, regardless of what happens with the RCD, but I would just, I would want to attach a recommendation that we reform the way that we're handling these, whether it be fractional or no Measure D is used. And, you know, have city council either pass it as an ordinance or pass it as a ballot measure. But like, the, the population of Half Moon Bay hasn't changed in 20 years. We're at the same population we were back in 1999 when the measure was passed. Based on stuff I just looked at, it's gone up, it's gone down, but we're basically at the same population level. And, you know, I think there are a lot of very good reasons that are made by many people around why we want to have Measure Ds. As our kids get older, we'd love to have them come back, but they don't want to live in the same bedroom they grew up in. So I think, I, I think we should make a recommendation to city council to reform Measure D and not necessarily dictate how that works. That'd be my recommendation. I don't know where the other major commissioners sit on that.
Yeah, I'd, I'd support that as well. I'm kind of surprised it's taken our council as long as it has.
So I think what we're tasked with is to approve the Measure Ds. And, and I think that we have a path to approve both of the ones that are in yellow and to alleviate that pain. I also think that we have a chance here to make a recommendation to city council to, to approve most of the ones on this list, since we have 22, I think it was, additional units that they could approve in the September transfer. So that seems to me very straightforward and actually a, a good use of Measure D. To me, it's a signal that Measure D works pretty well. And so I, I think that it, the opportunity is here to just, to take care of that. Like, that's, that's what we were tasked to do. I'm not sure how a, a measure, like, are we supposed to ask the, the city staff to set aside those two allocations? Or are we just supposed to, how, how does that work? How would that work? Can you explain to me?
You would, you would ask city staff to modify the, the resolution to reflect your changes, and then you would approve, well, you would vote on it. And if it's approved, then we would modify it and then send it to the chair for his signature.
So can I make a motion to modify the resolution?
I'm, I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gorn, I want to ask Director Lacko a follow-on question. The, outside of the resolution itself, recommendations such as wanting, urging city council to prioritize the affordable housing at 490 Pine, and also to, as, as Commissioner Hernandez articulated a moment ago, to reexamine the role of ADUs in, in Measure D. Should that be part of the resolution or a separate action?
Do you remember, Coe, if we included that in the resolution? I don't think we did.
I, I believe the resolution would just be for the scoring. So there, there could be a separate recommendation.
Separate motion.
But one would be for the, to ratify the scoring or modify.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I heard three, three proposals here, one being the Measure D, one for the reallocation, and the third to approve the entire list. I could support two out of the three. And I would like them bifurcated or separated if they can be. If they're put all together, it's difficult for me to vote for, for something.
Yeah, well, I, I think what is needed is a, a motion to reallocate two of the certificates from 940 Main to the yellow.
I'm happy to make a motion, but Commissioner Gossett has a-
Oh, I'm sorry, I, I need another pair of eyes.
The only point I wanted to make before you talk about potentially asking city council to revisit exempting ADUs or JDUs from Measure D is that city council approved 67 Measure D allocations this year, and only 47 were requested total. So, well, for the outside of the downtown area, and only two were used. That's 47 on this page. So 47 of 67, we have, you know, there's not a shortage of Measure D. So I, I just don't want you, I, I, I just want to put that out there, and, thank you.
I'd like to make a, I'd like to make a mo, so I'm going to take the idea that was proposed by Commissioner Reams and say, make three sets of motions here.
One at a time to vote on, please.
Yes, one at a time to vote on, yes. So I'd like to make a recommendation to modify staff's recommendation on the Measure D allocations that are approved, so that we remove two allocations from 940 Main Street as part of the planning director's equitable distribution right, and our ability as a planning commission to modify recommendations by city staff and award those two allocations to MDA 2025-001 and MDA 2025-020.
I second it. Any discussion? A roll call, please, Bridgette.
Yes. Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Reams?
No.
Commissioner, or I'm sorry, Vice Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved for one.
So I think the second motion is to make a recommendation to approve transfers for all of the projects on the remaining of the list with maintaining the current prioritization specifically for 490 Pine.
As many as, as they can?
As many as they can.
Yeah.
And that's a, you, you're, you're wording that as a recommend, recommendation to city council, right?
Yes.
Yeah, so it's not even really a resolution, is it? It's just a recommendation.
But I'm making a, so part of what we were asked to do is make recommendations to city council.
Sure.
We've broken this into a second item.
Sure.
So.
Well, I'll second Commissioner Hernandez's second motion.
Well, before we do that, we also need, we need to make sure that the city council awards to, you know, transfers to, to 490.
Well, that was part of his-
Yeah, and, and we would, and we would add two additional transfers to 940 Main Street.
Okay, all right.
So I'll modify my request, just to be clear, that we are recommending to city council that they approve transfers of Measure D allocations for the downtown area to the remaining projects on this list, to the extent that they're available, with a priority given for 940 Main Street and 490 Pine Avenue, in their current order.
I will second that.
Any discussion?
No.
Roll call, please.
Okay, Commissioner Gossett? Okay, Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rems?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gorn?
Yes, please.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved, 5-0.
And then the third thing we have are recommendations for, um, city council to consider. Um, I have a few things, um, but I would respectfully ask, uh, Commissioner Gossett to make the recommendations, and I might consider amending some of them, but I'll let you.
Well, in terms of, city staff didn't ask us to come up with any more recommendations, I don't believe, um, in the option list, so I don't know why we would even be entertaining any other recommendations, when they're not asking us to.
Well, I, I, I see your point. I think that the, as Commissioner Hernandez mentioned a moment ago, that the role of the ADUs in this process has been painfully evident tonight, and, uh, and council has, as we all know, discussed on more than one occasion in recent years, uh, taking up the question of what is, what is right going forward for ADUs. So I, I think, I think it's actually in our duty to shine a light on that and, and help city council, uh, understand how important it is for them to do that.
So are, are we discussing?
Yeah.
Okay.
And may I, may I just chime in here, Mr. Chairman?
Well, Vice Chair Gorn at the floor for just a minute.
So, um, so this is something that, um, has been brought up before, and the Planning Commission discussed it and decided not to, um, to recommend that to the city council. The city council has, uh, discussed it at length already. That, that issue was, was before them already, and they decided not to do that. So, um, I don't really understand why we're going to again recommend it. Um, if you're concerned about, um, separating out ADUs, we're actually looking to approve most of these because of the ADUs. And so separating out the ADUs would effectively get, you know, four more approvals down at the bottom of the list. So that's, that's kind of, in some ways, that's neither here nor there, but really, the real issue is, is if the city council has already looked at that, they've talked about it at length and they decided to talk to. So I don't really understand why we're.
I'm sorry. Did you have something to say?
No, I was just going to, through the chair, if I may.
So, so I was just saying, it's okay. I guess, um, I think that this is, um, something that the city council already dealt with. That's all.
Yeah, and I can appreciate that and I understand it. Uh, the issue I have is, I'm new here, and I understand there's a new council also that may have not revisited this. Maybe we should give them an opportunity to say, we struggled with something tonight, and we want them to look at it if they choose to. If they don't choose to, okay. At least we did our part to bring it to their attention, that we're struggling with these kind of things. We'll struggle again with it next year, I suppose, you know?
Yeah, I, sorry.
So that's, that's what I think, I'm saying when I said I would support, you know, bifur- bifurcating these things in the three, three units, so that at least we can, uh, show the council that, you know, we looked at this thing, left it upside down in all kinds of ways. And I, for one, I'm still confused, even though I judiciously looked at the background that staff put together on the ordinance. I didn't read the ordinance because I'm afraid to. And so I looked at the background, it was a very good summary of the background, and I understood everything that was in there. Then I looked at the list and, and I couldn't understand how certain things happen, and now I have a better understanding. And it, I won't get into the nuts and bolts of it, but the, the, I think, just looking at it and listening tonight, there's some very serious issues that need to be addressed. I'd be happy to talk about that at another time when it's earlier. So, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I've not, I've not been in favor in the past of, of we giving city council directions on what they should do specifically with, with the ADUs. Uh, I think it's, it's been really last year since they've had a quality debate about that, and it's symbolic, you know? If we recommend that they look at it, it's symbolic. You're right, it's, it's, it's an issue for them already, but I, I, I think it would, I think we'd be showing competence and foresightfulness if we flag it as a, as an issue worthy of city council.
So, so are we also going to say to city council that they need to look at administrative remedies for measure D, since that's also been brought up, but we didn't really talk about it because it was kind of off topic?
I, I, so I, I think there's a couple of things. I can make a motion if it makes things easier and we can debate it.
Yeah, that's what I know, yeah.
Sure?
Thank you.
Okay, so I'd like to make a motion that, um, we, as a planning commission, have received the staff report, uh, for measure D, these for 2025. We agree with the, that staff has followed the same process they followed in past years, and we have some recommendations, uh, that city council consider. Number one, that all grocery stores, inclusive of bodegas, like the one next to Spice Me Thai and the one next to Happy Taco, be considered as grocery stores, which they are, uh, for the purposes of the scoring process. Also, to make sure that all medical practices, including the new one, the urgent care facility that's been opened, is included in the scoring practice, um, for measure D allocations. I would also, um, make a recommendation that we have something like a, um, applicant bill of rights, um, so they understand, here are things you should do, or maybe a more clear checklist of, here's what's going to happen and here are your rights, here's what you can ask, here's what you should do, because this is not the first time I've heard people say the process is a little murky. And I'm not saying we're going to do everything, but I think we should take steps to make applicants more aware of their rights, so we don't have these types of mistakes or statements being made, right? So that's the third part. And then the fourth part is, um, I think city council should consider modifying or, um, the manner in which ADUs and JDUs are, uh, consume full measure D allocations. Consider. Those are the recommendations that I have. That's my motion.
So through the chair, um, I would, so city staff has already heard that direction. So the, the, the direction about, you know, making sure that the process is clearer for people. So I think that really what you want to do is you want to say reconsider separating out ADUs, that's what you want to do. So I think you should just make that motion.
No, I'm making all of the motions. I'm making a set of recommendations based on our meeting. I don't want to amend the motion.
I'll second it, just so we can discuss it. I'd, I'd support all of those things. Again, it, it's largely symbolic, but it shows that we're listening and we're thinking about the importance of, of, of all of these issues, and, uh, we'd be happy to let city council, in their wisdom, do what they do.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Commissioner Rems?
I'll support all of your recommendations. I think they're very good, but I'm thinking about adding one, if I may. I brought that up earlier with the two yellow areas. I, I consider them an area of like a point of cusp. They're on, they're on a precipice. They're just missed, but they're just not, not enough, you know? It's something like that, that, that's going on there for those two. And there needs to be fairness, equity, and some flexibility that the council needs to exercise in these kinds of situations. Now, I know there's mixing and matching, but then, in order to do that, you penalize someone else that has already won the allocation to take away from them to award these that are on the cusp. Now, there could be a number of ways to do that. You could say, okay, we'll, uh, we'll issue these two conditionally, uh, based upon an allocation coming, coming up, as we similarly did. Or they could come up with a different way. I'm just looking for.
Can I make a recommendation to modify my, um, my proposal? Because I, you're not saying we change the first two votes, but it's more of, in the situation where there's a, um, a tie, or, um, we have to kind of split the baby, if you will, um, guidance from city council on how we should handle ties and get feedback on what we've done today as a process.
Yes.
Okay, so I'd like to modify my, um, proposal to include, um, getting feedback from city staff, from the city council on how we should handle ties, and to the extent that we've exercised, um, uh, our rights as a planning commission to make changes to the allocation, whether or not we've done so in accordance with their wishes.
I'll, I'll second your modified motion. Discussion? Want to vote?
Let's vote.
We have a roll call, please, Bridgette.
Okay, Commissioner Gossett?
No.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rems?
Yes.
Vice Chair Gorn?
No, thanks.
And Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Motion approved, 3-0. Um, just like to clarify that, um, you, with all these motions, um, there was no motion to adopt the resolution ratifying the January 2025 measure D allocations.
Yes, our first, Commissioner Hernandez's first motion, uh, modified the resolution to divert two certificates from Main Street and award them to the, the two yellow ones.
Have we satisfied the requirement?
Yeah. If I may, through, through the chair, the staff report breaks out the recommended, um, on the first page, the recommended actions of the planning commission. Um, and the first was to move to modify the allocation or to, to provide direction on what the allocation should be. And then a second was to, um, adopt a resolution, um, approving those allocations. So it's that, you know, two separate actions.
So we haven't done that, you feel?
Yes.
So you modified staff's recommendation and, but did not adopt a resolution?
Okay.
So I'd like to make a motion to adopt a resolution to accept the modified allocation.
Second.
What, what, excuse me, may I ask a question?
Yes.
Is that the one you're going to real, real allocate the unit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Commissioner Gossett?
Yes.
Commissioner Hernandez?
Yes.
Commissioner Rems?
No.
Commissioner Gorn?
Yes, please.
And, um, sorry, it was Vice, Vice Chair Gorn. It's late. Um, and Chair Riddick?
Yes.
Okay, motion approved for one.
Thank you, folks, for hanging in there this late hour. Do you understand what, what we've done?
We've approved your allocations. Um, a recommendation to city council. Thank you.
Um, you're right, I was, everybody, yeah, we have it, I have it written down as 3-2.
Yeah, thank you.
It's 11:30 or 11:15, so yeah, thank you, I appreciate it.
I know, I'd, I'd feel horrible if we made Doug sit here for four and a half hours and never get to him. Are, are, can you, can we handle it? Can we?
Whatever you want to do.
Let's go for it.
I don't know what happened. Does it have to come out to you?
Make a motion that we extend the meeting by five more minutes? Just in case.
I second it.
Chair Riddick? Is it okay if I, um, send an email with the director's report tomorrow? Does that sound like a good idea?
Yes, if you judge, there's nothing that we need to have, uh, timely knowledge of. That's, I think that'd be fine with everyone.
All right, thank you.
Or that the public needs to know.
Thank you.
I'll ask her about the way to share that publicly.
Yeah, it should still be on that drive.
Okay.
Yeah. Dude, do I have some protocols here, or do you want me to just start ripping? Uh, well, there's no action on this, so I think we can skip the priority, the preliminaries. Um, the reason why we're doing this, um, it's a, just a brief, um, discussion on SEQA, specifically the focus is on what the planning commission deals with. We understand it's a difficult job. Uh, there's a lot of technical terms, there's over 50 years of history and litigation with SEQA. You're in a crowded room with everybody telling you, you can't do this, you can't do that. Um, and so this is the 20-minute version, um, of just the things you, you, that will come up here at the planning commission. If anybody wants to take a deeper dive, there's some other resources. California Chapter of Associate Environmental Professionals have good workshops. Solano Press has some excellent books on the subject, as well as California Planning. If you really want to take a deep dive, UC Davis, UC San Diego have some more in-depth programs. So one thing is, a lot of times, we sort of lose track of what SEQA is, what the legislature intended it to be, because you sort of think of it, well, if it's going through SEQA, there's something wrong with the project, it's a way to sort of kill a project, almost. But the legislature, they created something that's flexible, uh, gives broad discretionary powers to local decision makers, uh, goes back to 1970. It's primarily a process, it's not like a regulation like the Clean Water Act. It's a way you review projects to identify potential effects on the physical environment. It, it requires it to be a, a transparent, a public process, many opportunities for public to get involved. Usually I like to put a lot of pictures in my PowerPoints, but it's just words, so I've highlighted a few key words that, to keep in mind. So feasible is its own definition in SEQA, and it's one that comes up a lot. We'll go through that a couple of times here. The other thing to remember is, there's always been this tension with SEQA, that the priority was to protect the environment, but they also realized you have to put some, some guardrails on that, otherwise nothing would ever get done. So it's to provide a balance between protecting the environment and providing an efficient process with limits on what have been cited and, and. process with limits on what have been cited in, in some court decisions, as endless studies and discussion, that, uh, public resources could have been better spent on mitigating impacts. So again, when you get back, this is verbatim out of, uh, SEQA guidelines. There's a statute, which is the actual law, and then there are guidelines that help you to interpret what the statute means, and the guidelines get updated theoretically every couple of years to reflect the recent court decisions, as well as legislative changes. So again, it's to inform government decision-makers, to identify ways that environmental damage can be avoided or significantly reduced, doesn't say it has to be eliminated, doesn't say you have to stop impacts, just says you have to be open about what the impacts are, what you can do about it. So again, you prevent significant avoidable damage to the environment by requiring changes to projects, um, through the use of alternatives or mitigation measures, but again, they have to be feasible. Feasible has its own definition. Um, and to disclose to the public how, how you got to that decision, there's, you remember, 1970, we're on the heels of these huge projects, building highways through people's neighborhoods and airports and deals being done in smoky rooms. And so this was to bring it out into the light, to make sure everybody knew what was going on. And again, this is verbatim out of the SEQA guidelines. SEQA does not require technical perfection. When people come up and say, you can't approve a project because this EIR isn't perfect, that's not what the law says. Um, it says, but rather, we look at adequacy, completeness, and a good faith effort. So again, these are not regulations, the state is giving you discretion to make decisions as long as you show your work, you use real evidence to support it. Um, so again, going back to the guidelines, make decisions that are informed and balanced and are not, not, and this is a quote, "Do not use SEQA as the instrument of the oppression and delay of social, economic, or recreational development or advancement." So often, we lose track of that, because we're just looking at, SEQA is how you identify bad stuff, how you slow the project down. But the legislature was much more open-minded about this. So a couple of, um, just a few definitions. Substantial evidence, this is directly out of SEQA. Um, it means enough relevant information and reasonable f, reference, inferences from this information that a fair argument can be made to support a conclusion, even though other conclusions might also be reached. So in the law, it's even saying, not everybody has to agree, just have to be open about you, how you reached your decision, that you used substantial evidence, um, to get there. Feasible means capable of being accomplished in a successful manner within a reasonable period of time. Doesn't say how long, it says reasonable. So again, that's your discretion sometimes. And you take into account economic, environmental, social, technological factors. So if you're proposing a mitigation measure, and it's economically not viable, you can't require it, it's not feasible. Same thing, the technology doesn't exist to mitigate an impact for air emissions yet. You can't require it, it's not feasible. This was an early SEQA case, that one of the first things that people asked was, well, it's all about significant impacts, what, what is significant? And they went to court, and the judge in the 1970s pulled out his Webster's Dictionary off the shelf, looked it up, and he said, significant means substantial. Thank you. Um, that's been fleshed out a little bit. Um, so again, straight out of SEQA, it means it's substantial or potentially substantial, adverse change in any of the physical conditions within the area affected by the project, including land, air, and so on. So again, it's not as clear and black and white as sometimes you want, but that's what we have to work with. But the important thing here, it's an adverse change in any of the physical conditions. So, physical. Um, they specifically, in SEQA, they said, this is just effects on the physical environment. They specifically said, it doesn't include social, economic effects, uh, except on some rare occasions. It's a little bit different now, because of, um, environmental justice and the housing things. Um, so the next thing you need to know is what a project is. It has a specific meaning in SEQA. We take, frequently just talk about projects generically. The definition in SEQA, it's an activity undertaken by a public agency or requiring discretionary approval from a public agency that has the potential to cause either a direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change to the environment. So initially, they were thinking it would just be, government agencies would go through this, if you wanted to build a new highway, you had to be open. And then very quickly, they said, well, if you have to get a, a use permit, some kind of discretionary permit, it's private projects also. Um, and again, there's language in here, um, impacts that are direct or reasonably foreseeable indirect physical change. So it gives you some flexibility to look at what, what could be happening in the future, but it's not open-ended. It puts, and it doesn't tell you how not open-ended it is, but does give a little bit of a framework there. Um, so when you get a project, there's, there's sort of a, a process you go through. The first thing is, is it a project under SEQA? Um, things like ministerial, there's a distinction, ministerial projects, like building permits, usually not. So if it's not a project, it's probably not going to be subject to SEQA. Then you, if you have a project, you look through the exemptions, there are statutory and categorical exemptions, apply to a pretty broad range of projects, but there's always a caveat that, um, if there's something unusual about the project or the location, you can't use the exemption. Like, if you're building a house, it would be exempt, but if you're building it on top of a big wet one, probably not. Um, but also, you have to look at, if, in and of itself, it may not be significant, but if you add it up with other projects, there could be a significant cumulative project. And this is where a lot of confusion comes up. When we started out, there was, you either had a negative declaration or an EIR. Um, and the, for the negative declaration, you filled out about a four or five-page checklist. It was, it was a screening tool to look for potential impacts. And if you didn't, it didn't have to have a lot of evidence, you could have, you could have technical studies to back it up. But again, it was meant to be that balance, you could screen out smaller projects, not spend a lot of time on them. But if you did have potentially significant impacts, you're going to write an EIR. So then, around 95 or so, they came up with this hybrid, the mitigated negative declaration, which you see a lot of here. And this one uses the same SEQA checklist as you would for a negative declaration, and for that matter, the same checklist you'd use for an environmental impact report. But the one caveat is, you have to mitigate all the impacts to less than significant level. If you can't do it through mitigation, you have to write an EIR. You'll get a lot of people, you'll hear them just yelling and screaming that your, your mitigated negative declaration is inadequate, you absolutely have to do a full-blown EIR. Truth is, there's really not much difference anymore. Same baseline, same project, same impacts, same mitigation. The only thing that's different is, if writing EIR, it's mandatory, you have to do an alternatives analysis. So if you couldn't mitigate all the impacts, you look at different versions of the project that could reduce it. And kind of ironically, when you demand an EIR, and they say, sure, we'll write one, um, it's actually, makes it harder to challenge the project in court, so that it's kind of counterproductive if you're demanding an EIR. Um, this, I just copied out of the initial study checklist, mostly because it was a short one. These are the impacts that we go through. Um, for population and housing, you know, you click, click on the boxes, is it potentially significant or less than significant with mitigation, or so on. And I highlight a couple of things here that are sort of helpful. This is on population and housing, and so the, the, the issue here is, would, would a project induce substantial population growth in an area either directly, for example, by proposing new homes and businesses, or indirectly, for example, through extension of roads or other infrastructure? And two key things there, direct impacts, indirect. There's some famous cases, LA Water Company said, well, we're not stealing all this water from the Owens Valley, we're just building a ditch. And the court said, no, you're, you're, you're not just building a ditch, you have to look at the whole project. You can't say, we're just doing this today, and later on, we'll figure out what to do with the ditch. Um, this, this one's kind of interesting, the next one, displays substantial numbers of existing housing necessitating the construction of replacement housing.
Sir, I'm sorry to interrupt you, but we never voted on extending the meeting, and so we need to just do that, I think.
Okay. Can I make a motion to extend the meeting by five minutes?
Second.
All in favor?
No, we didn't. Yes.
And, no problem. So the, the interesting thing here is, the first part, you think is the impact, which is subs, displays substantial numbers of existing housing, but it's not. It's the second half of the sentence where it says necessitating the construction of replacement housing. That's the impact, because displacement, that's a social impact, it's economic, it's not physical. Physical impact is the replacement housing. So it gets a little confusing. Um, a couple of sort of warning points on mitigation measures, I don't recommend trying to modify them from the days, in the heat of the moment. Everybody's trying to get a project done, but, um, it's safer to add or modify conditions of approval rather than the mitigation measures. There are very specific requirements for mitigation measures, they have to begin, be feasible, you have to be able to verify that it reduces the impact to less than significant, you have to be able to document that it's done that. People get angry, and not all impacts are environmental impacts. Um, a lot of quality of life concerns aren't part of SEQA. So for example, we used to treat traffic and parking as impacts, but because of changes in state law, we don't. So people get involved early in the process for SEQA, because that's sort of the first point where they can comment on a project. And then you tell them, well, we're going to add 2,000 car trips to your street, but it's, it's not an impact. They, they get angry. So remember, those are, we have a general plan, it has a transportation element, there are many ways to deal with those impacts, but it's just not SEQA. Some other hazards, like, uh, if you build on a steep slope, that used to be an impact, now you have to show that you, building the house will make slope stability worse, it's more involved. This is a good one for everybody, comments and controversy, um, directly from the guidelines. It says, "Argument, speculation, unsubstantiated opinion or narrative, or evidence is clearly inaccurate or erroneous, or evidence is not credible, shall not constitute substantial evidence." So we're going back to substantial evidence, that's how you're supposed to be making your decisions. Um, again, we touch on the issue of economic and social impacts, they say that's not substantial evidence. So it keeps, there's a feedback loop, keeps going back to substantial evidence. So just a quick summary, you are authorized to certify EIRs, including those that have significant impacts through an overriding consideration. There are a few exceptions, um, but in general, that is correct. Controversy, differing opinions do not prevent you from certifying an EIR. Again, as long as you've disclosed all the impacts, you've had an open process, and you can show what your thought process was, you can do that. SEQA does not require perfection. Legislature realized that we're not going to have perfection, there are just areas where we don't have all the information we want. And that's okay, as long as you disclose what information you have, what you don't have, why you're comfortable making whatever your decision is. And again, the EIR is not necessarily more robust than a mitigated negative declaration. When people start yelling in your face that you have to do that, just be aware, you don't always. Um, and comments that do not address SEQA impacts, frequently, they're covered under the general plan or some other policy document. So I think in your deliberations, sometimes it's useful to just mentally separate them out. If we're going to certify the EIR, is this a SEQA issue, is it a general plan issue? What is it? And, I almost got done on time.
Doug, does, uh, does SEQA consider aesthetics a physical impact?
It can.
Can someone argue that a, a, a building they find ugly is, is making a physical impact?
If you say it's ugly, that's not an impact, usually. If you, again, we have architectural design guidelines that talk about it fitting in with the neighboring buildings, the community character, not necessarily SEQA, but it's in our other policy guidelines.
Right.
There is an aesthetics section in SEQA, and it talks about different kinds of impacts. But they, that's the one area they defer a lot to local decision-makers. Other impacts like noise, it's more quantified. It says, okay, if you, if you cause a increase in noise level of 10 decibels, and you say the threshold is only 3 decibels, mitigation is, you reduce it to 3. Aesthetics, it's just, as you all know, really difficult to quantify.
Subjective.
Yes. Well, it's more subjective. There are, I've seen, at, at federal level, they've come up with these tools where you assign points to all kinds, in a big matrix, and you get a number, and that number tells you if it's a significant impact under National Environmental Policy Act or not. My experience is, you can make those numbers say whatever you want to, so I'm not sure how useful they are.
Yeah. Well, thank you very much for this in record time.
Okay.
Leslie, Vice Chair Gorn reminded me that, read the director's report, we usually have it as part of the meeting, and we, uh, you know, we don't want to, we don't want to ask you to share it in a way that isn't public, I guess.
Okay. You want me to hop to it?
Uh, can you do it in two minutes, or do we need to extend the meeting?
I can do it in two minutes.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, let's see. I wanted to let you know that, um, the cloud permit system, uh, we've worked out kinks for the building permits, and we are configuring the code enforcement section now, that's different from two weeks ago. And, um, it's looking pretty good, so I think we are going to proceed with, um, configuring the system for planning permits as well. It, um, takes a lot of time, takes a lot of staff time, um, but it's turning out to be well worth it.
Good.
Um, I wanted to remind you about the planning commissioners' training on Tuesday, April 20- 29th, and that's offered by the Planning Collaborative. I think I sent you all the invite. They did not tell me what the topic is, but I assume it's related to housing, since it's the Planning Collaborative 21 elements, so. Also, I wanted to remind you that we have the safety element update underway, and the first event since they finished the vulnerability assessment is coming up on April 28th, and that's at the Half Moon Bay Library. They'll have, we'll be there with the vulnerability assessment. We'll have representatives from the Fire Department and the Department of Emergency Management there. So, and that's been in our newsletter now, just about every week, so. Let's see. The only other updates were upcoming meetings. So for the next one, we have, Marlene is going to present on the general plan and LUP policies and permit findings. Was that a good enough description? Okay. And we have the storage facility. Doug's going to bring forward a storage facility on Parisima Street. And then we also need to adopt the hazard mitigation plan into the safety element. So both Marlene's item and the item for the hazard mitigation plan adoption into the safety element, we're supposed to be on for tonight, and we pushed them to the next one, because tonight was so long. And I'll stop talking now.
Thank you. Do any commissioners have communications?
I make a motion to conclude?
I have, I have something to ask, if I may. I have a, a list of things as long as my arm to discuss from time to time. What's the best way to do that? Discuss amongst ourselves here without having to go out and have a cup of coffee, which we can't do with two or three of you, you know?
Well, it would have to be on the agenda for the Planning Commission to take it up, that kind of a group discussion.
All right.
And...
One at a time.
Okay. And I guess, I guess the way to do that would be to ask Director Lacko to agendize it, or, or in this part of our meeting at the very end, to discuss it as potentially being agendized.
Maybe you guys can talk with Lacko, but we can't all talk about it here.
Right.
Would it be appropriate if I just had a dear colleague memorandum that I just passed out to you?
It's probably not, because of the Brown Act, the, the stuff we went over at the last meeting.
That's correct. Commissioners can't communicate with each other collectively about topics that come before the commission, or that relate to the commission's business.
I was referring to bringing it to the commission, not doing, doing it outside of the commission.
I think it may be helpful to just, to have a clearer sense of what you're proposing, but...
Yeah, I'd be happy to talk with you offline, Jim, and see if I can have any wisdom to share.
Yeah, that'd be great. Okay, great. Thank you.
Can I ask a question to follow up on that? Could he submit, like, a public comment letter? Like, is he allowed to do that? Like, if he has things that he wants to communicate, could he do that? Like, just submit it at our, like, to city staff at the next meeting, and it's added as public comment? I mean, unless you don't want the public, I mean, I don't, I assume you wouldn't care if the public knew about it.
Not at all.
I'm, I'm just asking, can he do it that way?
It's a little too vague for me to...
We're starting to have discussion.
Yeah. If, maybe you and I can, can hook up later this week, and I, see if I can give you any good advice.
Well, there are just things I see around the city that I want to bring up, like, how do we, how do we underground some of these variables, for example, you know? And why aren't we doing that, or why aren't we recommending that it be done somehow?
I'll, I'll send you an email, and we can have a chat, and see where we go from there.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Anyone else?
I move that we adjourn.
Second?
Aye. Thank you, everybody.